Please.
Councilmember Baines, councilmember Brandau, Brettafield.
Here.
Capriolio.
Here.
Chavez.
Here.
Soria, and President Olivia.
Here. At this time, we'll have the invocation by Pastor BT Lewis of the Rising Star Baptist Church. Following the invocation, we'll pledge allegiance to the flag. Please stand.
Good morning. Thank you very much for this opportunity. Let us pray. Gracious God, we are thankful for the opportunity to serve you. And so, God, we are grateful for the gift of life and for the honor of being your children. You are our Creator, our Redeemer, and our Keeper. And so, God, we're grateful for an opportunity to stand before this body and still have the opportunity to call on our God, our Father, for guidance, for wisdom, and for understanding. Lord, we thank you for this council. We thank you, God, for all of the members of this dais. We thank you, God, for their exceptional leadership over the years. We thank you, God, for their willingness to hear the voices of every part of our city. Master, we thank you for this great city and for the diversity in our city. We thank you for the wisdom that you have given this council. And then, God, we thank you, Master, that that wisdom will be tempered by compassion and love for the people of our city. Master, let them not grow weary in well-doing. Let them continue, Lord, in anticipation of a harvest, Lord, and give them the courage and the stamina to continue the work that they have begun in our city. So, God, today, as a city, Lord, we humble ourselves before you. We humble ourselves, Lord, because we know that when we humble ourselves before you, you lift us up into places that we would not otherwise be able to reach. We pray today for the servants of our city. We pray for our fire department. We pray, God, for every member of our police department. We pray, God, for every servant, every employee of our city. We pray, God, for their safety. We pray, Master, in the name of Jesus, for every citizen of this city, every home, Lord, every family, we pray, God, that the love that you have shown us will permeate every area of our community. In the name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as for all.
Thank you, Pastor Lewis, for the invocation. This time, we'll move to approving the agenda. Madam Clerk, are there any changes to the council agenda?
A couple of changes to the agenda. File ID 17173, which is a joint closed session to discuss 1911 Merced Street, has been withdrawn from the agenda. And file number 17168 regarding the closed session to discuss 1911 Merced Street has been withdrawn. So, both of those items are withdrawn.
Thank you very much. Member Soria.
Thank you, Council President. I'd like to pull the 10:00 AM item related to the active transportation plan and continue it to our next meeting on February 2nd. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. The screen is clear. We now move to ceremonial presentations. And this first one this morning is the-
Council President, do you want to vote on the agenda?
That probably would be a good idea. The screen is clear. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? None. Okay, so the motion carries, six to zero with member Baines absent. Now, it's time to move to the ceremonial presentations, why everyone is here today. Let's begin with the certificate of recognition to multi-medical systems expansion. And this is City Councilmember Steve Brandau.
Good morning, everybody. Are we going to see any craziness from parks later in the day? It looks like we're going to. I see an elephant hat over there. Yeah. What was it? Not an elephant?
Hora.
Oh, Horton, here's a hue. Yeah, that's the day. Okay. I'll try and get us all ready for that. Perfect. Everybody up here, all of my colleagues, one thing that we have super in common is celebration of efforts within our community to grow and expand small business. We do a lot of things for big business, too, which, you know, you've heard about a lot of that stuff lately, Ulta and Amazon and some stuff like that. But a lot of times overlooked is the burden and all the great things that our small business does. Really, most of us work, that aren't working here in City Hall, outside of City Hall, most folks work for small business. And today, I wanted to recognize some friends of mine that have a small business in District Two, right out off of Golden State, near Highway 99, and it's Medical Multisystems. And I went out and did a tour of their facility here about, what do you think it was, about two months ago? Month ago? And they showed me all the great things that they're doing, and they also showed me all the great things that they're getting prepared to do. And they're hiring a lot of folks and expanding. And I just thought, after I started thinking about it, I thought, that's wonderful. We need to tell your story. We need to recognize you. And so, I'm going to ask them to come up here and join me today. The president is Darren Nealan. Darren. And Jeff is the founder. I should probably get him up here first, huh? Cheryl and Julie also. And they have a ribbon cutter, or they have a rib, is it a ribbon cutting today?
Ribbon cutting.
I'm going to let you talk about that. We have a get-together, I'll call it a get-together, we have a get-together at Your Business Day at 5:00. I'm going to be there. I'd love it if any of my council colleagues could be there, or anybody from the city would like to show up and support them. I'll let you talk a little bit more about what you do. You gave me a tour, but if you could give everybody a couple of minutes and tell us what you do and how many folks you're going to hire in the next year, that type of thing.
Okay. First thing. Thanks, Steve. We appreciate you guys having us here. Thanks. Thanks for the honor. So, Multi-Medical Systems was founded by Jeff Legruda back in 1996. We provide medical equipment repair and maintenance services throughout the state of California and actually now beyond the state of California. We have approximately 80 employees at this point and have grown that by about 60 employees over the last four years. So, a lot of those right here in Fresno. So, we're really proud to be able to hire people here in the community. We also just recently relocated a facility that we had over by River Park and moved it out to Golden State, expanded our current location by about 10,000 square feet. So, we're looking forward to continue growing. This year, 2016, we hired 22 employees. This year, we're expecting to probably match that number. So, thanks again. Jeff?
Well, he pretty much stole my thunder. But yeah, we've grown. There's a lot of different areas that we service, hospitals, surgery centers, clinics, clinic systems. One of our contracts is with the state of California Prison Systems. We service all the medical equipment. And we actually developed a wheelchair program where we pick up and deliver to, throughout the prison systems, with a two-week turnaround. And you're looking at prisons in Blythe and up in Pelican Bay. So, these guys are traveling, and this is where we service them, is in Fresno. We don't service them on-site. You know, he talked about the rental part of it. We're opening up what we call in our industry a depot repair center where hospitals can actually send equipment in, and we service it there, and then we turn it around and we send it back to them. Last year at this time, we actually merged with the Innovation Institute, a great organization that is owned by multiple hospital systems. And with that, now we are now affiliated with about 105 hospitals nationwide. So, that's where our growth is really, is starting to really come from. And like Darren said, probably, we'll probably add at least 20 people this year. So, that's pretty much it.
Hey, thanks a lot. Jeff, and what can we expect tonight? We're going to have some fun out.
We have a live band. We have music. We have food, all Italian-themed tonight. We have a photo booth with props. Cat in a Hat, you'd fit right in. We'd like to have you guys come out and see what we're doing out there. It's pretty exciting, and I'm honored and blessed to be a part of this team. And-
And if somebody was coming to that event tonight, where are you at?
We're on Golden State, right between Herndon and, no, Shaw and Bullard. You have that tack ops where they have like that laser tag right next door to there. So, come on down. 4:30 it starts, ribbon cutting at 5:00. And we're going to continue on until 8:00 tonight. So, we'd love to have you guys there.
So, they already added 22 folks this last year, and they're going to match that this year. Can we give them a round of applause for that? Yeah. And I just have a certificate of recognition for Multi-Medical Systems in honor to congratulate you on your ribbon cutting and expansion of your repair depot in the city of Fresno. Thanks for your commitment to excellence and being a part of our diverse business community. Hope that you all be here for life. Thank you very much. I'm going to give this to you, Jeff, and let's take a photo. And we'll see you this afternoon. I'll be there about 4:30. If these guys can get me out of here on time, for sure. Ladies, if you'll step over.
Our next item is a presentation of a certificate of recognition to the Fresno City College Women's Volleyball State Championship Team. And this is Councilmember Soria.
Good morning, everyone. I am very excited to call up the young women from Fresno City College, part of the volleyball team, their coaches as well. If you guys, if we can have some of you guys stand on this side, to recognize their hard work, their dedication. Really, they put everything this year, and they won our first-ever state championship for Fresno City College. So, they've done some remarkable work, not only as athletes, but also as students at City College. So, I do want to commend them all for their work. So, I do have a special certificate for the team, and then I have individual certificates for all the young ladies. I also, I know this wouldn't be possible, but for the support from the coaches. There are a number of coaches that have been involved and have worked very hard with this team to make the state championship a possibility. So, I want to thank our head coach, Coach Roble. Thank you so much for being here, for leading the charge with these young women and getting them to this exceptional level. I also want to thank the other coaches. I think I have the names here. Roy Verdusco, are you here? And I'll also recognize the other three coaches that also have played an invaluable role for these young women to reach, being state champions. Hunter Knight, Richard Saldivar, and Nate Perez. And I would be remiss if I didn't introduce, actually, our Fresno City College President, Carol Goldsmith. Thank you for being here, and thank you for supporting our athletics department and really, you know, making sure that teams like the volleyball team reach these higher levels. And so, I want to thank you for supporting them and supporting our college. So, I will just name off the certificates, and you guys can come and get them. Riley Wynden. Sidney Rigby. Brittany Olivares. We have Kylie O'Keeffe. Sidney Molander. Alexis March. Alyssa Lopez. Jessica Luplo. Shayna Laird. Carly Kosinski. Jaina Goldsberry. Brianna Du Burke. Ally Cooper. And Michaela Cervantes. I also want to point out, I believe- Number four, Jaina Goldsberry. You were selected, right, as the MVP at statewide level? So, we want to congratulate you for that special recognition. We wanted to make sure that we highlight the high recognition. Again, on behalf of the city of Fresno, delighted that Fresno City College is in my district, but we do want to present a special recognition. If we can read the proclamation for the record, and then I will, I guess before, sorry, Clerk, I'll let you say a few words, and also President Goldsmith, she wants to share some.
First, I'm very excited that President Goldsmith can make it over here because she has, she's been with us for a very short period of time, and she's very busy, and we appreciate the support that she's given our team today. So, I would like to thank her as well. I kind of felt like when we came up that the Mayor Lee Tyler Moore theme song should be played today for some reason. The players probably have no idea what I'm talking about, but that's okay. Most of you out there probably do. But just real fast, we're so honored to receive this from our district and represent our college. Women's volleyball was started in 1975 in the state, and that's when Fresno City started volleyball. We are the third Northern California team to ever win the state championship, and we're the only landlocked college to win. We're honored for our community. All the ladies that stand before you all represent the Valley. And I think that's what's most special to us, is that we did it with kids from our community. And so, we're so proud also for our extended volleyball community of coaches, their elementary coaches, middle school, high school, youth coaches that have put so much into the sport in our area and that we could bring that recognition to our sport and to Fresno. So, all our schools are recognized here. Just real fast, because I'd like to let you know where they're from. Sidney down there is Clovis West, Riley's Clovis West, Jessica's Buchanan, Ally's Clovis High, Brittany is Clovis East, Kylie is Clovis North, Michaela is from Central, Jenna is from Clovis West, Brianna is from Clovis, sorry, Buchanan. Shania is from Central, and then Sidney down there is also from Clovis High. And so, we're very happy to represent our community. So, thank you very much.
Good morning, council. Thank you so much. Thank you, Councilmember Soria, for the recognition that she gives to us on this very special day. You know, for all of us who live in Fresno, we often hear about all the negative things. I know you certainly hear about some negative things. It is so nice that we can come together and recognize that California first community college, let me say that again, California's first community college, which is Fresno City College, we now have our first state champions. We have many other champions at our school. This is a campus that you should be proud of. These women are our future. Our future is bright. And I just want to say thank you all for coming here. Thank you, ladies, for being champions on the court and in the classroom. Thank you, Councilmember.
So, now, Madam Clerk, if you could read the proclamation for the record, and then if we can just get together to take a picture while she reads it. Thank you.
Whereas Fresno City College Women's Volleyball Team won their first-ever state championship in school history, and whereas they had the longest winning streak in school history without losing a set, and whereas they had the most amount of games won in school history, and whereas this past season, they swept through the final four during the state championship without losing a set, and whereas Coach Roble won NorCal Coach of the Year Award in her first season as head coach, and whereas all coaches were first-year, first-ever collegiate coaches, including Roy Verdusco, Hunter Knight, Richard Salvador, and Nate Perez. And whereas Jenna Goldsberry was selected as state championship MVP, and whereas the city of Fresno is proud of the Fresno City Women's Volleyball Team for representing our community and showcasing Fresno's athletic talent around the Central Valley and throughout California. Now, therefore, it is resolved that we, Mayor Lee Bran, and the City of Fresno Council do hereby recognize the athletic achievements of the Fresno City College Women's Volleyball Team and do hereby proclaim January 26, 2017, to be Fresno City College Women's Volleyball Day in the city of Fresno.
Again, ladies, thank you so much for being here, and again, thank you for continuing to work hard and to be dedicated to really get our women's volleyball team to continue being state champions. So, again, congratulations.
Councilmember Soria, if you could stay right there for a second, because you're vice president, and you're going to have to help us out for a few minutes. But I did notice that you were about a foot shorter than, and I won. Is that why they gave you a half-size ball? Okay.
I also wanted to congratulate these student-athletes, these ladies from the Central Valley. We want to paint the Valley green with a V, and all you folks have actually executed that in a fantastic way. I wanted to congratulate Coach Robles. Back in the St. Anthony days, she took my son and my daughter under her wing, and started their volleyball careers. And she's a magnificent teacher, a great coach, obviously, and a great recruiter. So, congratulations to each and every one of you. Keep up the good work. Put us on the map again. Thank you.
All right. Good job. Now, we're moving into our 2017 Winter Employee of the Quarter Awards, and it's what we call our pride awards. And Council President, you showed up right in time. I had our vice president go down there. Maybe she can help you after all. But Bruce-
So, if we could, before that, I also want to acknowledge Coach Roy Verdusco. Coach Verdusco coached my son in men's volleyball. I thought he was going to be a wide receiver, but he decided to play volleyball. But I will tell you, Coach Verdusco not only taught my son lessons on the court, but he taught him valuable life lessons away from the court. And this is the kind of individual who shapes the lives of these young women by his influence and teaching them things that will benefit them and make them solid citizens in the future. So, Coach, thank you for everything that you've done for my son and for my family.
Right on. That's a great testimony. And so, City Manager, I think you joined down there, and our city clerk. And so, Council President, it's all yours.
So, this is, again, where we get to celebrate what I think we should call our franchise players. You know, we've got a great team here, and everyone, every day, does a phenomenal job. You know, the last couple of weeks, it's been public works fixing the potholes that seem to grow like weeds when it rains. But it's all the other services. It's public safety. It's our men and women, police and fire department. It's our Parks Department. It's our attorney's office. I mean, collectively, this organization does a phenomenal job. As I said, every morning when we start our day, when we first start on the water, that just doesn't show up magically. That shows up because there's men and women in the public utilities department, making sure that that water's there, that trash gets picked up. So, if you think as an organization, again, how we touch the lives of our residents every day, it just kind of makes you sit back and go, wow, we really do provide a lot of the essential services. People can't get to work in some cases without public transportation. So, these individuals are the individuals who have been voted amongst by their coworkers as the players who go above and beyond, the ones who are always there when you need them, the ones who are putting in a little bit more so that our community can get a little bit better. This is also an opportunity, and it's come to be somewhat of a competition in which the Parks Department, it tries to go toe-to-toe with now the attorney's office. And I don't know what's gotten into the attorney's office, but they seem to be picking up. So, I'm waiting to see what happens when the other departments, maybe even police, who's somewhat in the fire department, who are a little stoic at times, also start getting into the spirit of this, because it is a celebration. We are here to celebrate all of you, and we're here to have fun at the same time. So, I'm going to ask the clerk to begin the presentation, and let's, Council President, you have a couple of comments as well.
Sure. Good morning, everyone. Just on behalf of my colleagues on the city council, you know, we all have different opinions, and we all say different kinds of crazy things when we're in a council meeting and when we're in debate. But the reality is, is that every single one of us support and love everything you do. This is a big city. It's a big organization. We have thousands of employees. But when we have to be, we're very quick, we're very lean, we're very mean. And we've seen it crisis after crisis with the Somerset Apartments, where it was all hands on deck. This entire organization last year stepped up and took care of a lot of stuff in a very fast, in a very quick way. And we appreciate it so much, every one of you. And we also congratulate all the award recipients because, for going above and beyond. So, thank you so much for coming in every day and doing what you do, because there's such a value to our community, your efforts here, and we do appreciate it so much. So, congratulations to all of you, and especially to our award winners today. Thank you.
And don't be shy. Let's make some noise when we start bringing these people down.
Well, good morning, everyone. I'd like to welcome you today to help us honor those recipients who've been nominated by their peers. That's always the exciting thing. It's not the supervisors, it's their coworkers nominating them for these things. And it's getting more and more interesting every quarter to see what Parks is up to. So, we've got some Dr. Seuss over there and some Mickey Mouse over there. And let's see what happens today. We're going to start with the airports department, and Charles Bunn is the recipient. Going to tell you a little bit about what Charles' coworker said. Chuck performed a large and time-consuming job of repairing the airfield markings at Chandler Airport, resulting in significant safety improvement. His work was one of perfection with an eye on details and attitude to do the job right the first time. While not normally assigned to Chandler Airport, he was courteous, respectful, professional to the users and staff at Chandler. Chuck exemplifies airport's goal to provide safe, secure, and high-quality facilities that are economically, environmentally, and socially sustainable, and promote good regional economic growth with excellent service. So, thank you, Chuck. Next is the city attorney's department. And Ken Jorgensen is the recipient. Ken joined the city attorney's office in 2015. Since that time, Ken has served the office with professionalism and enthusiasm, as you can tell. This includes enthusiastic implementation of his duties as the office's fire safety officer, and his willingness to give winning advice on sports picks. Ken is a key member, he's a key member of the litigation unit. Among Ken's outstanding qualities is his flexibility to learn and master new aspects of the law, including subrogation and eminent domain cases. Ken's exceptional willingness to assist the other attorneys and staff is appreciated by all. Ken is truly a team player. It is with great pleasure and pride that the city attorney's office recognizes Ken as their Employee of the Quarter. Congratulations. Congratulations. Okay, moving on to the DARM department. Moving on to the DARM department, we'd like to recognize Marla Williams. Is Marla here? Since Marla came to the division, she has been a tireless worker. As her predecessors were in transition to their new assignment, she jumped in with both feet to learn the duties of her new position, allowing them to transition as needed. Working countless hours of overtime, she was able to clear the administrative paperwork backlog and bring a sense of on-time and normalcy to the paperwork flow. Marla is easy to work with, needs little or no supervision to go about her daily task and will take on projects that benefit not only the code, but also the entire DARM family. Her tireless enthusiasm is infectious to her work group in particular and the division in general. Thank you, Marla. Moving on to the Fire Department, we'd like to start off with Anthony Vasconcellos. During the course of his 18 years with the department, Captain Von Casellas has taken an active role in training and exemplifies our department's core value of train for excellence. Recently, Anthony recognized the need for training in forcible entry techniques. He took the initiative to develop and deliver training to all members on forcing doors with a halogen tool, including our current recruits in drill school. Anthony has been an instrumental member of the high-rise training cadre. He teaches the Fresno City College Fire Academy and serves as the instructor coordinator in the Northern California Training Officer Synopsis. Anthony's passion for training is a source of motivation for us all. So we thank you, Anthony. Next in the Fire Department is Timothy Otto. He's not here, okay? Okay, let's see, who's next? Timothy Otto. Read a little bit. Okay, let me tell you a little bit about Timothy. In May 2016, firefighter Tim Otto stepped forward to assist with the first-ever state-accredited firefighter-one academy at the Fresno Fire Department. His enthusiasm and easygoing demeanor proved a strong combination in the instruction of new recruits. Tim used his metalwork and welding skills to customize existing props outfitted with the new metal shutters on the four-story drill training tower. Tim also erected a variable pitch roof prop, which provides new recruits and seasoned line personnel the opportunity to train in realistic conditions and conditions to ventilate with saws on a variety of roof pitches. Tim's capstone effort came in the form of modular live-fire props. Almost single-handedly, he developed a unique design for building and metal skeleton which can be configured in any number of arrangements to provide realistic live-fire training. Firefighter Otto represents the best of the firefighter department and he should be commended for his ingenuity and commitment to excellence. So, well done. Also in the Fire Department is Christina Crowan. For a good part of the quarter, Kristi not only managed tasks at her own desk, but also performed duties at the billing and receivables desk while the position was vacant. She also brought many outstanding billing items to current status. Kristi also worked with Training Deputy Chief Todd Tuggle to secure $135,000... to secure $155,000... okay, it's a homeland security grant, so that was really good, for various equipment needs. So Kristi, comprehensive understanding of the department, timekeeping, which is telestaff, was instrumental in gathering data for costing purposes, including vacancy analysis that had been impacting certain labor costs. This was important for the district-related costing as well as helping with the labor forecast. Kristi is a valued member of the Fire's finance team and her contributions were significant. So thank you. And finally, with the Fire Department, don't you have one more? Oh, I'm sorry, that's finance. Where's finance? Come on up. And we're going to congratulate Donita Bonesteal. Donita exemplifies all the qualities of an exceptional city employee. She is the knowledge expert in her field. She constantly takes the extra steps to provide good customer service to both associates and customers, even when the inquiries or requests have nothing to do with finance or even the city. Donita is unfailing, responsive, efficient, and positive. That is remarkable considering the scope and volume of her job duties. She is a role model for excellence. So thank you, Donita. Next is the Information Services Department. And we'd like to recognize Sandy Sahoda. Sandy! Sandy has exhibited high levels of commitment, professionalism, and patience in her duties on many different projects. Most recently, Sandy was instrumental in working with Public Works to implement the LaserFISH document management system and bring it online. Given our current staffing level, Sandy's flexible and leadership takes to take on a new project positively impacts the performance of ISD, the Systems Application Division, and more importantly, Public Works. In addition, Sandy has continued to work on projects in people softens sun guard system. Her continued efforts have earned her praise from her peers as well as the departments she serves. For these reasons, we chose to recognize Sandy as ISD's Employee of the Quarter. Congratulations. And now from the Council Offices, Aubrey Willis. Aubrey! Okay, so we are happy to recognize our Council Assistant, Aubrey Willis, as Employee of the Quarter. She began interning for District 7 in the summer of 2015. She later joined the team as a Council Assistant. During her time with the city, among various tasks, she has worked with the City Manager on legislation regarding the taxi industries, provided extensive research regarding the state of our parks in the city of Fresno, and assisted in planning the inaugural event for Mayor Bran. We are happy to have her part of our team. Congratulations.
That part of having to work with the City Manager was probably worth the price of admission all by itself. But more importantly, she also met and helped facilitate the dialogue with the taxi industry, which at times can be somewhat of a stretch. But she is a go-getter. I could tell you, I said, okay, you want to... she's interested in coming to work in the public sector. So it was a trial by fire. Here, I need you to go do this, 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 this. And she was, great, let's go do it! You know, I don't know, Tommy? I don't know, it's something in the water going. But I just want to also acknowledge all the work you did on that and it was a real joy working with you as well. You're welcome.
A good choice, Council, good choice.
I just wanted to take this opportunity to say a few things about Aubrey. In District 7, I'm the longest-serving Council Member on the City Council, believe it or not. I've been here six years and a few weeks. And not like anybody's counting. But, you know, we do our thing in our office. I believe we do it well. I think we do a good job. But, you know, after six years, you get set in your ways in how you do things. And you hear these stories in sports on ESPN about the, you know, the baseball team and they're headed towards the end of the season and they need a spark and they need somebody to ignite the lineup or, you know, augment the bullpen or whatever it happens to be. And so they trade for somebody. They bring up a rookie or something like that. And then that person provides a spark until they go to the end of the season. And that's what Aubrey has been for our office and that's what she has been for us. You know, we're in the final drive of what we're trying to do for the center of the city. And so she's been our spark. And she's lit our office up and she's doing a fantastic job. And we're very, very proud of her and what she's brought, not just to our office and District 7, but to the entire city. She's an asset to this organization. So Aubrey, thank you.
Okay, everybody, watch your ears. It's time for Parks. All right, let's see, who are we recognizing? Emily Toto. Emily's coworkers described her as friendly, dependable, customer-service-oriented, and is always willing to take on extra work to support the team's effort. Emily recently assumed the duties of a coworker who resigned. Emily applied her time-management skills and took the initiative to reorganize her workday to seamlessly incorporate the new duties. She did so without dropping one of the mini-balls she was juggling. Emily was also successful at increasing the number of special events held in the group activity area of Woodward Park, promoting the park's event venue and by working with maintenance staff to ensure the venue is clean and well-maintained. Emily also provided assistance to the short-staffed accounting team during one of the busiest times of the year. And that's not all. She also stepped into providing customer service as a backup to cover the walk-ins and the telephone inquiries at the front counter. Emily exemplifies the true meaning of teamwork and customer service. The Parks Department is grateful to have Emily on their team and they congratulate her on a well-deserved recognition. Congratulations. Next in Parks is Janelle Avalar. Janelle was hired to oversee the youth sports program in the Recreation Division. Since joining the team, Janelle has transformed the Biddy and Junior Sports Program by recruiting students with backgrounds in recreation and kinesiology. The improved quality of temporary staff has elevated the quality of the program. As a result, participant numbers have grown from 1,085 participants in 2015 to 1,300 in 2016, an increase of 17%. Janelle also provides programming with Mountain View Church at Melody Park, including the Summer Junior Giants Program. She also partnered with the Weekend Recreation and Fitness Program staff to offer programs at designated sites and she is expanding the types of program offered to the community, including a new junior rugby program and skills clinic with the Biddy and Junior Basketball Program. If that's not enough, she is also looking into offering summer sports camps this year. Janelle has done an exceptional job of recruiting and organizing. She has established great relationships with employees and partners and she is always accessible, enthusiastic, and willing to lend a helping hand. The Parks Department is fortunate to have Janelle on their team and we offer our congratulations to her well-deserved recognition. Next is the Personnel Services Department. Unfortunately, Rose Miranda, who is being recognized as at jury duty. So I'll tell you a little bit more about her. Rose Miranda has been nominated by her peers for the Employee of the Quarter recognition because she is a great coworker who consistently shows a lot of passion for her work. The knowledge she possesses and applies allows her to effectively defend and settle claims filed against the city. Rose consistently protects the assets of the city from claims for which the city is not liable. By the same token, she's equally vigilant in equitable resolving claims where the city is liable. So Rose is a great asset to the Risk Management Division and we are pleased to recognize her as the Personnel Services Employee of the Quarter. Moving on to the Police Department, we're going to start with Carrie Gianetta. Carrie Gianetta is assigned to the Police Department's Personnel Bureau where she oversees the hiring process of sworn as well as non-sworn employees. Carrie's job is challenging as the demands and workloads at times can seem overwhelming. Carrie meets these demands and challenges head-on with a high level of enthusiasm. Carrie is very organized and detailed-oriented. Her manager is very appreciative of Carrie's candor, willingness to take on more work, positive attitude, and flexibility. One of Carrie's greatest contributions to the Personnel Bureau is the level of experience she gains while working within Human Resources at City Hall. Carrie's experience has increased the Bureau's efficiency and has contributed to identifying problem areas of concern in the hiring process so they can be corrected immediately. Carrie has a great deal of initiative, is conscientious, and a valued member of the Fresno Police Department Personnel Bureau. Thank you, Carrie. Okay, next is Jose Rivera.
Jose's actually somewhere probably in the building here.
Oh, yeah.
But he is undercover.
That's right. Come up, yeah, that's right. He's listening. Yeah, blue hair. Okay, so let me tell you a little bit about Jose. Jose Rivera has been with the Fresno Police Department for over 17 years. Jose was selected to be part of a major narcotics unit in 2005 and has taken on many complex drug investigations. During his assignment in Major Narcotics, Detective Rivera was asked to be a part of the Fresno Meth... let me see if I can say this right. Methamphetamine? Methamphetamine Task Force. There, he responded to major methamphetamine labs and continued his exemplary work. Detective Rivera returned to the Fresno Major Narcotics in 2010 where he has been a leader in training new detectives coming to the unit. Detective Rivera also works with agencies such as DEA and FBI. With the experience that Jose has gained over the years, those agencies routinely ask for his help. Jose has a passion for combating major drug dealers and continues to set the example as a true leader and a great detective as he moves forward throughout his career. Thank you, Jose. Also in the Police Department is John Mendez. These are coming. John Mendez has been handling residential business and vehicle burglaries in the Southeast District for the past three years. He is highly respected for his proficiency in investigating crimes and his ability to identify and arrest suspects. Detective Mendez uses his technical abilities to place surveillance photos and leads on Facebook and monitors activity to identify suspects. He is proficient at writing warrants and creative in using alternative sources and methods to help identify criminals. Last year, Detective Mendez also earned a position on the SWAT team. Knowing the importance of interaction with the community in which he serves, last summer, he donated his time and money to take children from the Southeast Elementary Schools to Disneyland. This was the first and maybe only opportunity for these kids to make it to that trip. So thank you, John. Very nice. And finally, in the Police Department is Sarah Purvis. Sandy Purvis has been with the Fresno Police Department in the Records Bureau for 20 years. She has trained record personnel at the public counter throughout this past year. Sandy has also graciously worked with our limited-train staff issues for coverage and has changed her schedule to meet the needs of the department. Typically, a senior administrative clerk in our records department are scheduled to work three months of weekends per year. But Sandy has changed her schedule to work six months of weekends, much to the great appreciation of the supervisors and coworkers. Yeah. Sandy consistently anticipates departmental needs and offers the best solution that works out for everyone. She is cheerful and positive to the public and her coworkers. New personnel especially appreciate her encouraging and helpful attitude as they learn their jobs. She is an invaluable asset to Fresno Police Department's Records Bureau. Congratulations. Congratulations. Moving on to the Department of Public Utilities. The first recipient is Eddie Costa. Eddie has been invaluable to the Water Division and the customers involved in dealing with current discolored water issues. He is able to clearly explain to others what is happening with the various types of plumbing fixtures, pipes, and other accessories used for getting water into their homes. In addition to the discolored water issue, Eddie is the Division's lead field person with the current high-speed rail project. He is responsible for scheduling water main shutdowns, tie-ins, and contractor field meets. Eddie is completing these projects in line with the estimated cost, which is invaluable for budgeting and scheduling purposes. We wish to acknowledge Eddie as Employee of the Quarter in the Utilities Department.
You know, Tommy, if you got rid of that seven or eight-year-old Android, you could probably take pictures with your own phone.
Next in the Public Utilities Department is Jack Shong. Jack was instrumental in completing the wastewater management division environmental laboratories accreditation for the testing of multiple organic compounds. This accreditation is needed to allow WMD Lab to submit reportable results of organic compounds to regulatory agencies. The accreditation for the organic compounds was a significant project for the WMD Laboratory, and it was a long process that Jack took to completion, thanks to his commitment, organization, good work ethics, and positive attitudes toward the project. All these qualities and achievements have also resorted in Jack being selected by the local section of the California Environmental Water Association as the CWEA 2016 Laboratory Person of the Year. Jack's nomination for the Employee of the Quarter and his selection as the CWEA 2016 Laboratory Person of the Year are well-deserved. Congratulations. Next in the Public Utilities Department is Chata. Chata came to the Water Division just over a year ago with limited knowledge of fittings and material used in the warehouse. During his first three months, it was a common sight to see Chata walking through the warehouse and memorizing each part by name and location and learning each fitting and how it works with other materials. He was promoted to the Senior Store Keeper position. Chata has strong work ethics and serves his customers well. He learns and adapts quickly to the daily demands of the Water Division. Chata has gained the respect of his coworkers, vendors, with his can-do attitude. Chata continues to strive to be the best he can be and serve his customers well. Thank you, Chata. Moving on to the Public Works Department, we'd like to start out with Kathy Rodriguez. Following a lengthy service with Caltrans, Kathy joined the City of Fresno Real Estate Services Team in May 2015 and hitting the ground running. Kathy has been an extremely productive employee during her tenure and is always willing to take on additional assignments. Kathy routinely completes her property transaction ahead of schedule and is a value asset to the real estate services. Thank you, Kathy. Also in the Public Works Department is Jonan Ruiz. Jonan is currently assigned to the Fulton Mall Reconstruction Project as the project inspector overseeing the engineering and administrative activities. The Fulton Project is one of the most complex and challenging city capital projects. Jonan's daily tasks include documentation of the day's work and preparation of documents associated with the work, all of which he performs at a very high level of quality and with minimum oversight. He prepares the monthly payments to the contractor, which is a very multifaceted document where he demonstrates his superior organizational skills. He demonstrates expertise, professionalism, and superior problem-solving skills as well. He is respected by his peers and is thought of as a leader and mentor by his fellow inspectors. He is an important and valuable employee to the Construction Management Division, so congratulations. Also in public work is Steve Acosta. Steve is a great example of an employee who serves the city with excellence and pride. His coworkers agree that he is an exceptional employee to work with, and he gets the job done and shares his technical and professional expertise with all involved. He handles numerous assignments and is always willing to step forward to take on additional responsibility. In addition, he has received several compliments due to his expertise and professionalism that he brings to the job every day. Steve is a valuable member of the Public Works Team, so we congratulate you and keep up the good work. Department of Public Works, again, we'd like to recognize Lars Lenny. In October 2011, Mr. Lars Lenny joined the street cleaning team. Immediately, his positive can-do attitude was felt by his coworkers. He quickly became a highly skilled street sweeper operator, providing leadership and mentoring to our new and current coworkers. Lars enjoys helping residents by cleaning the roadways to their homes, workplace, and within the neighborhoods. So thank you and congratulations. We're moving on to the Department of Transportation, and we'd like to recognize Jackie Johnson-- Jackson, I'm sorry. Yeah, Janice. Janice Jackson has been with the department for over 20 years. She taught new student drivers, assisted with skills training, and behind-the-wheel training. Janice also helped the department overcome an obstacle that was preventing drivers from obtaining their commercial driver's license. The DMV was not able to provide testing dates in Fresno, which meant the students were unable to test for their license. Appointments were made at the West Sacramento DMV office to give students the opportunity to test. Janice gave up family time and traveled with the students to ensure that they were given every opportunity available to obtain their license. Janice also came in on her days off to provide extra training to students to ensure that they pass the driving exam. A special thank you to Janice for her hard work and dedication. Also in the Department of Transportation, Jesus Gonzalez. Jesus Jesse Gonzalez has been with the department for 15 years, working as a driver, supervisor one, and trainer. In 2015, the department was faced with the supervisor training being on a long-term absence a few days before a class was scheduled to start. Jesse was assigned to the training section as a fill-in and has yet to return to his supervisor position. He has always worked on his days off and has worked late to assist with the training of the new drivers and maintenance personnel. Jesse also gave up family time to travel to West Sacramento to ensure his students were given every opportunity available to obtain their driver's license. A huge thank you to Jesse for always stepping up and for his dedication. And last for the Department of Transportation is Elizabeth Jones. Elizabeth Jones has been with the department since April 2016 as a training officer. In the short time she's been here, she has had a great success with the training section. She redefined the training modules for commercial driver's license to better allow for cohort training. This allowed the department to move more than 30 students through the commercial driver license program within 60 days. Her willingness to take on this challenge has been greatly appreciated. Thank you. Well, that ends our program for today. I would like to take just a moment to thank my staff for putting these programs on. They do a lot of work on the certificates and the write-ups and the food that's out in the foyer for you, so I hope you enjoy it. Thank you for coming.
At break to go to the reception. We have a motion from Member Capriolio and a second from Member Bretafeld. The screen is clear. All those in favor?
Aye.
And any opposed? That motion passes with Members Brandow and Baines absent. Move now to the approval of the successor agency minutes. Member Capriolio?
Counsel comments?
No, there's more minutes to approve.
Okay, thank you. I'll wait.
Are there any changes to the successor agency minutes from November 3rd, 2016, and January 12th, 2017? Okay, seeing none. And Doug, we don't have to go out to the public on approval of minutes, right?
That's correct.
Okay. Seeing none, the screen is clear.
Motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion to approve from Member Capriolio, a second from Member Bretafeld. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? That motion passes with Members Brandow and Baines absent. We now move to Councilmember Reports and Comments and Member Capriolio.
Thank you very much, Council President. I want to thank the Fresno Chamber of Commerce for recognizing me as one of the most business-friendly electeds in Fresno. I appreciate that. It was quite an honor. It was a great event last Friday night. Also, I had a great time with Mayor Brand at Fresno State University. It's great to hear about all the wonderful things at the university and the boldness of Dr. Castro. And we're looking forward-- this is a new thing that was just announced-- we're going to break ground for a performing arts center at Fresno State. So that's coming around in our near future. Looking forward to that. And again, last night, Chief Dyer was here earlier. It was an honor to be at the Crime Stoppers Dinner last night to honor and thank the sponsors in our community that worked so hard to provide the finances so we can have a Crime Stoppers program. It was well-attended, and it was really a privilege for me to be there. I wanted to give a huge thanks to Dell and his team, specifically Patricia Taylor, for their work in the district. They're just fantastic. They're above and beyond when it comes to providing services to District 4. Two more things. One, last but not least, I wanted to thank Scott. Scott was here earlier as well. And his street team. Scott, thank you and your street team for the great work you did during the stressful rain time. It was great to have the rain, but people didn't expect the repercussions from it. And I had many constituents that were concerned about the flooding and actually watching every raindrop, but Brian Russell and his team were right on it, and I want to thank you guys for the attention. It really was fantastic. You know, it means a lot to the residents of District 4 and the entire city. And we got a ton of calls, and then we got a ton of calls saying thank you, and I wanted to pass that on to you and your team. So, thank you, President.
Thank you. There are no other council members punched up. Oh, Member Soria.
Thank you, Council President. Just a couple comments. One, I wanted to ask the city manager-- I know, I believe that the council at some point had directed sale of the properties that we own. Is that correct? Or something?
Yes, what happened is, actually, the administration at the time, in collaboration with now Mayor Brand, put together a strategy to start looking at the availability of property that is underutilized and looking at the opportunity to sell those properties. As you recall, councilmember-- I think it was about two or three weeks ago-- we brought forward the sell of the Blosser property. And then we're also looking at some other opportunities as we go forward. There are some options that we're currently looking at, including leases that we have and whether or not we can get a better rate on negotiating either better terms with the current leaseholder or looking at other properties to provide the same facilities but at a lower cost. So that's an overall strategic effort. In fact, I'll be meeting with the representatives from CBRE probably in the next couple of weeks to go over what we've done so far, the status of the properties that we had identified, and then maybe perhaps some others.
Perfect. And I just bring that up because our office had asked to see if there's like a master list of these properties and see if it was on our website. There's nothing that is available, so I wanted to see if there's ways-- I'd like the process to be transparent and the residents to know what is available, if there is an interest, and then they can, I guess, approach the city for future purchases like we did with one of the actions that the council just took in the last council meeting. But I'd like to see if we can have access to that list of properties.
Yes, and on top of that, I'll provide-- you know, it would be the most effective-- it would be, I'll provide you the contact for our brokers with CBRE. And then if there's an expressed interest, then you could point them towards our brokers who are handling all those transactions.
Perfect. And then I'd also ask that the list-- if there's a list that we make it public--
Okay.
--that it's posted on our website somehow, so if people are interested, that they have an opportunity to go see, just for full transparency.
Okay.
Thank you. The next thing, I just want to make an announcement. Throughout the year, I have morning coffee meetings in various places in the district. I will be having my first coffee meeting of the year at Cup of Joy in the Fresno High Area at 7:30 on January 31st, which is this next Tuesday. I invite residents that live in District 1 or business owners that do business in District 1 to come visit. Come and share your concerns or ideas about how we can not only improve District 1, but also improve our city. And so just, again, at Cup of Joy at 7:30 for a cup of coffee. And then lastly, I just wanted to make a couple comments regarding some of the chatter and comments related to immigration happening. I know yesterday was reported from the Bee that our mayor was not supportive of making Fresno City a sanctuary city. And I know the complications of the issue because we don't want to jeopardize federal funding to our city. This past November, right after the election, I did stand with a diverse group of folks, leaders, council members. My council colleague, Oliver Baines, actually joined me with pastors, some school board members, to really demonstrate that there is unity in our city on the issue and that we're going to support our immigrant community. And so I stand by the words that I shared in November to really make sure that our community knows those immigrants that live in the city that are documented and also undocumented, but are great contributors to our local economy, that they know that I stand with them to ensure that there's no local policies that will jeopardize their safety here in our city. I want to make sure that they feel that they're still welcomed, that we have their back, and that regardless of what our president does, which in my perspective, in terms of building a wall, I think that it's really a responsible waste of our taxpayer money. I'd rather see those dollars being used to cover our potholes or repave our streets, help maintain our parks. I'd like to see, actually, those dollars come here for those purposes rather than build the wall. We've heard also, not only from the community, but even our ag industry, which relies heavily on our immigrant population, that some of these draconian steps that the president has taken will have us--
And I was just mentioning that we still have two that are active. City Manager Rudd was instrumental in getting agreement from our HUD representatives that we would have concluded that process by December of 2016 for some, a variety of reasons, some which were out of our control, the retirement of their regional director who was spearheading it, they had some mandatory use it or lose it vacation schedules that impacted our reps at HUD for the month of December. So, a variety of reasons have resulted in us not having concluded some of that by the end of December. And so, one, transitioning for our staff, the new staff, as you've met Thomas Morgan, and then also coming to conclusion with those outstanding monitorings.
Okay, so, so in six months, you expect our team to be able to, either moving forward, they'll have been trained in those areas, they'll be able to do some of that themselves, is that right?
Right, that is my estimation. So, it's, it's, just to kind of oversimplify, we've got, in our division, in the Housing and Community Development Division, there's kind of the, the past work that we're dealing with, there's the present work, and there's the future work. Right now, our staff is doing a great job at dealing with the present and the future. The past, these are all things that are from 2012, 2014, 2015, that is where we really need this assistance. And so, my hope, and my goal is to, by June 30th of this year, to have all the past stuff settled, so that we are just in the present and working on the future plans.
Okay, that makes a lot of sense. I am anticipating some changes in HUD. So, how are we going to keep up with the changes, the federal changes to that department?
We are going to continue to just, we have a, a great relationship with our regional office, and we are just going to continue to nurture that relationship. As the city manager has said in the past, we will go back up to San Francisco again if we need to, to nurture that relationship and make sure that they know that we're being responsible.
You might need to go to Washington DC to nurture that relationship.
I don't, I don't, yeah, I can't speculate on that, but we are, we are flexible and nimble, and we will, we'll do as we're directed.
Okay, but as far as this contract goes, you're good, you're, yeah, okay. Thank you, thanks Kelly.
Members, oh, no, it's okay, you can make a motion. We have a motion by Member Bretafeld, is there a second?
I'll second.
And a second by Member Brando. Member, sorry.
Kelly, sorry, I just have one quick question. Thank you for providing the, that information. I know that we had asked you offline, and you provided us with some answers. So, that June date, is that the June date that kind of the regional has also said that we would have it all squared, squared away, or?
It is not, that's my best estimate.
Huh?
It is not, it is not, that is my best estimate.
But, we were anticipated to be done in December.
Correct.
So, six months is pretty reasonable to say that we should have everything behind us.
Yes.
And, that's, you know, I think for all of us up here, that's very important, so, I hope that, you know, we're able to focus on the current, or the present and the future as you guys have mentioned, so, thank you again for the work.
Thank you.
Have a motion and a second, the screen is clear. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries with Member Capriolio and Baines absent. Okay, and we do not have, the 10 o'clock has been removed, the 10:05, the hearing has been continued by the, by city staff. We move to General Administration, item 3A, actions pertaining to receiving non-storable flood flows from Millerton Lake in water year 2017-2018. Say flood flows, five times fast, Tommy.
Yeah, not on camera. This request is to enter into a, another contract with the Bureau of Reclamation to take advantage of flood flows that may become available from Millerton Lake between March 1st of 2017 and February 28th of 2018. The Bureau issues these contracts on an annual basis, this is the third time we've come to you for these contracts. Every year, the Bureau has different kinds of water available, there's about 12 categories of water that can come out of Millerton Lake on any given year. The number one category of water is Class 1 water, and that's where we sit, we sit at the top of that food chain. But, with our contract, we also have access to other types of water, and 215 water is one of those types of water. This year may be one of the first years in many, many where 215 water is available, and order for us to take advantage and take that water, and we have to have a contract with the Bureau of Reclamation. And prior to them issuing us a contract, they want to hear from this board, that this board is agreeable to enter into that contract and purchase that water. The water costs about, maybe $30 an acre foot, our normal Class 1 water is about $100 an acre foot, and so, this is water that comes very inexpensive, and we want to take advantage of those types of releases. We just got our contract back from this year, so there may be a window here between now and February 28th of this year where we'll take in some 215 water. So, with that, I'll be available for any questions.
Member Brando, then Member Capriolio.
Cool, thanks Tommy. So, Tommy, how much water is available to us through this program?
Yeah, so, it, they don't specify when we go into the department, when we go into the Bureau, they don't, because it's, just depends on snow, rainfall, capacity of the river, right? And what they'll do is they'll make a declaration that water is available behind, who wants it, and then we'll all of the, I think it's 32 contractors on the Frank Kern and Madera Canal, will submit our orders, and if the orders exceed what's available, then they'll start prorating. If the orders don't exceed, then we'll get 100% of whatever we request.
Whatever we ask for.
Yeah.
And then, what, what will we do with that water? Is it, stay up there for us?
So, this is, yeah, so that's a good point. So, this is water, as it, as the title indicates, it's not storable, so they gotta release it. So, we will take it into Leaky Acres, we'll take it into some of the FID recharge basins. I can tell you that today, actually, we started yesterday, we're taking stormwater flows right now into the wastewater plant that is in the channel, and we have 80 MGD of, 80 million gallons a day of capacity at the wastewater ponds at the wastewater plant. We're only using 60 million gallons a day, so we're taking water into the balance of our basins there, so that we can start filling water on the west side to kind of push it back into the, into the east side. So, this is water we're going to just make available, and any hole we can find, we're going to put it in.
And our canals are available to take this water? Because I know it's that time of year where we kind of retrofit some canals and clean up some canals.
Yeah, so, yeah, and so, this is where we kind of, we're working hard right now with FID, as part of our Kings River Pipeline Project, one of the things that we needed to do was construct a new intake structure on the Fresno Canal. The Fresno Canal is the primary way that water gets into the FID Canal System. We have a permit to be in there until February the 1st, but we've talked with our contractor, we've talked with our construction management team, we're trying to get out today or tomorrow, so that we can start taking this water.
Get out of the way of the, of the water, right?
Get out of the way of the water, yeah, exactly.
Fantastic, well, I appreciate that, Tommy. David Taub over here with GV Wire did a really nice Friant 101 video, that's fantastic, I'd love people to check that out. It does, it interviews the guy from the Bureau of Reclamation, and I don't remember his name right now, but I do appreciate you staying on top of everything related to our water, so I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Member Brando, and a second by Member Bretafeld, Member Capriolio.
Thank you. Tommy, before you sit back down, could you kind of draw and tell us what last year's water looks like and this year's water looks like?
Yeah, so, great year on water. We're still not quite out of the drought, we still want to kind of get, I mean, we've got plenty of water, but we've still got to get a few years in a row. Last year, currently right now, we're sitting on contracts. Our normal available water supply for the City of Fresno is 60,000 acre feet a year. Right now, we have contracts in place to take water in for about 65,000 acre feet, so it was a really good year. The additional thing is, with the way the water's coming out of the mountains right now, the Bureau has asked us, FID and a number of others, to take unlimited water releases at $10 an acre foot. And so, we're working scrambling right now to take that $10. So, we could push 170, 180 this year and have a really, really great year. As part of the new conveyance agreement, just for the board and talking with the city manager, one of the requirements was that the staff, on a periodic basis, in this time of year, in either this January, February, March timeframe, is going to do a workshop for you guys, just to let you know what our water situation is, how much is available, what we may do with that water, transfers, exchanges, or sales, based on how the profile looks. So, we had a great year last year, all the indications are that this will be another big water year, and so, we're, we're looking forward to, to being very well positioned.
Thank you, Tommy. As usual, I always support you and your water staff.
Thank you.
For us, thank you very much, thank you, Council President.
We have a, a motion and a second, and the screen is clear. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you. All right, we're moving on now to item 3B, this is also Department of Public Utilities.
So, the Bureau runs the Millerton Lake, and one of the other things they have available are these USBR, Bureau of Reclamation, Smart Grants. This is our third year of applying. First year, Bureau awarded us a million dollars to help us build the Frank Kern Canal Pipeline. Second year, we worked with Fresno Unified School District to bring in grant money to retrofit several of the irrigation systems at their schools, and we're currently in the process of working with that. No money out of the city's pocket, Bureau, the Bureau makes the money available, and then the school district's putting in the other half, is a 50%, 50% match. After looking at last year and how we were doing that, I talked with our Parks and DPW folks and said, you know, what if we, do we have any retrofit projects for Parks and Medians? And they said, yes. So, we decided this year, Parks and DPW and DPU to go ahead and submit another grant application to retrofit the irrigation systems on Parks and Medians, where we could go ahead and get some, some water efficiency gains in compliance with the things that are kind of moving at, at the state level to use less water. So, this grant is to bring in half a million dollars to help Parks and DPW retrofit some of their irrigation systems. One of the criteria is you have to have a 50% match, so, you know, this is one of those programs where if you already have made the decision that this is a project we want to do and we want to do it well, well, the Bureau says, well, if you've already got money assigned to it, we'll give you 50% of the money to go ahead, help, help you finish those projects, and then we can make projects available, make money available for other things, so, that's what this grant is about. Typically, we'll hear in May or June, we're, we're two for two, we're hoping to go for three for three, and it's been a, it's been a good program for us, and we, we look forward to trying to get a good application in.
Member Capriolio, then Member Brando.
Tommy, a couple of questions. I'll be making a motion to approve this item, first, and second, now, this is the, the third opportunity, and I, I hope we get this opportunity, but in looking at the, our book and evaluating the situation, it looks like Midtown, I call it Midtown Fresno, that's below Bullard and above McKinley, is not listed as one of the benefactors of this, so I don't see District 4, 1, or 7. Is there some way to incorporate our districts in this process?
Right, so I think, I think Parks and DPW are here, you know, so one of the criteria was, so, you know, and I'll let them come up and respond as well, but, so the first thing we, the, the two departments looked at is, what is currently on the books scheduled to be built? Money's been kind of planned and appropriated, all right, let's bring this matching dollar in. So, that's kind of where the list came up from. We learned when we worked with Fresno Unified last year that we get the list in now, there's still the ability, once we get, if we are awarded and we're recognized, the application, that we can make adjustments to the project, burst in size, location, and type. You can't change the dollar amount, but we can move some projects around. So, I'll let Scott kind of talk about how they kind of came up with the projects, and...
I think you...
I can probably speak to at least the Park stuff, because again, I've taken the role of the interim director. For Woodward Park and for Roading Park, for example, there was always, already funding set aside to upgrade the irrigation, as you know, we, at some point in time, will have recycled water coming into, into Roading Park. These are our two largest assets, largest parks. The irrigation system in both of these parks are probably 30, 40 years old. We'll be talking about deferred, and we've, as you know, Council Mayor, we've talked about deferred capital at great lengths.
Yes, we do.
And we'll be bringing an item back on the 9th. I will tell you that almost the biggest chunk, at least a third of the, the cost associated with deferred capital within the Parks inventory is irrigation system. And it is, it is a pretty big number, the whole number that we're going to be dealing with or talking about is a, is a huge number. But as we've talked about, this is an expense that this organization, that was there, but this organization for whatever reason chose to ignore. So, Roading and, as well as Woodward Park were selected because of their size, the amount of water, and the efficiencies that would be gained by improving the controllers. This isn't the irrigation system, but the controllers themselves. The other two parks, Highway City was an abandoned community center for quite some time, it is also where we host our science program, so that's one, we have a very old system, and two, this is where we teach children about things such as water conservation, so that's the best place for a lab, for, you know, state-of-the-art controller. And then Maxi Park, which is the site formerly known as the California Elm Gym, unfortunately, when that project, and when we purchased that project, at the cost and the amount of funding available, lacked any real landscaping around it. So, the whole system is, is, there's not a lot of landscaping, we've had to kind of put together as much as we could, some funding to provide basic things such as grass at a community center. So, this controller will, again, be used to augment that investment in that center. Overall, as far as projects in 1, 4, and 7, I will point to District 4, not District 4, District 7, we've, we've probably spent over $2 million in the last couple of years at Homes and Romaine. I can tell you that Romaine, for example, one of the investments was a new irrigation system, because the one there was, again, so old. So, we're just looking for the most efficient and biggest bang for, for the buck, based on the available funds that either Parks has or Public Works has. As I mentioned to Tommy, with Parks, we're using 1C, but we're also using general fund, the same case maybe with Public Works, I'll let Scott speak to that. But this is a match of 50%, so if we're going after a million dollars' worth of work, we had to find a half a million dollars within existing appropriations to match this grant. Fortunately, in the case of Parks, some of these projects were already scheduled, so that may provide us some opportunities to do some other things that were not anticipated, given the fact that we had already, we were looking to replace some of these systems as part of the ongoing deferred maintenance strategy that we've implemented over the last three or four years.
I think the key word was flexibility, and please keep 4 and 1 in mind with that flexibility aspect as this process proceeds, and we get the application more successful. And the second thing I would suggest is, when we do our fourth application, and I, your spirit will be here, we'd love to have you here, but we'd love to have your spirit at least, if we could put District 4 and 1 in a better position to reap the benefits from this type of grant and grant application.
We do, and, and I will, you know, acknowledge that over the last, well, last year, I think this council approved over four, maybe $5 million in Parks deferred maintenance. So, this is just the very little tip of an iceberg with a very long list of other competing improvements that we need to make in our Park system.
Thank you very much.
And then Member Chavez.
All my questions were answered, I had some of the same questions, so, did you make a motion?
I'll, I'll second, or you can second, doesn't matter to me, I'm fine.
Thank you, President. Tommy, just want to thank you for the work you did last year with Fresno Unified, I know we got a chance to, to chat, and I really love that concept, especially exploring the, the option of incorporating the Purple Pipe system within our school district, and I can tell you that, you know, Fresno Unified is the fourth largest school district, and their infrastructure is, is in such a need of repair that the, the guy, the, the plant manager at Roosevelt, we actually didn't have schematics of where the lines were, he just knew that it was like about three feet away from the football bleachers, and, and so this is going to be a big piece of, of how the city goes about, talking about infrastructure. But I, I did have a, a, a quick question, and I don't mean to stir the hornets' nets here, but what is the timeline for that JPA that's going to be really implementing the Groundwater Management Act, when they will be actually saying, this entity will pay X amount of dollars for acre feet of water they pump and, and all that? Do you have a timeline?
Yeah, so the, the drop dead deadline for us to start assessing people for groundwater extractions is going to be January 20th of 2020, so three years and 365 days from now, so, oh, less than that, really, but three years from now, we will have to start assessing people. We may assess earlier if we can get the rules and regulations in place, but tonight, there's a meeting of the North Kings GSA Group, there will be a recommendation to hire the engineer and hire to the legal attorney for that group, and their primary mission will be to put the rules and regulations for, how do we charge, how much do we charge, what are the extraction limits, and so, but that'll be a long process, so, but by January 30th of 2020, that's the drop dead date where people will start paying for extracting groundwater out, in this valley.
That, and that is going to be one of the most groundbreaking pieces of, of policy work that the state has done, and it's going to affect us quite, quite severely here in the Central Valley. But I just wanted to thank you for the work you did with the school district. Have we partnered with any other school districts? I know within, within the City of Fresno, we've got Central, Clovis...
We had made the, we had made the offer available to Central and Fresno Unified and Clovis, and when, when, when the workload got put in front of folks on, like our folks have done, the Parks and DPW, you know, you gotta identify the projects, do the cost as, you know, Fresno Unified stepped up and, and had all, had it all lined up and ready to go, and so, we're building it around Fresno Unified.
All right, that's all the questions I have, I think there was a motion and a second.
There is a motion and a second. Are there any members of the public who wish to comment on this agenda item? Okay, seeing none, we'll bring it back to the dais, and the screen is clear. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 6 to 0, thank you. All right, moving on, this is item 3C, this is the Police Department, actions pertaining to the award of three separate contracts. Chief Dyer.
Morning, Council. The item you have before you is to approve three separate contracts totaling just over $600,000 between three agencies, these are three-year contracts, and they are for the purpose of doing evidence collection in terms of DNA, those on sexual assault victims. The three contracts are for forensic nurse specialists of Central California, about 60% of our sexual assault victims and suspects are sent to that location, about 30% go to the Community Regional Medical Center, and that generally is for individuals that need some type of medical treatment plus a sexual examination kit, whether that's a victim or a suspect. And then about 10% of the funds to Valley Children's Hospital, and that is generally for those victims who go to that location, and then they do that collection of evidence for the Police Department. A request for proposal was sent out in February 3rd, 2016, there were six items that were listed in terms of criteria, these three entities were the ones that responded, and the funding for this comes from two grants, one of them being the supplemental law enforcement agency grant through the state, and the second is for asset forfeiture money that we utilize to pay for that asset forfeiture from drug seizures. And so, we're asking the council to approve all three contracts, the contract date is from July 1st, 2016, through June 30th of 2019. We've actually already been operating within this agreement, waiting to get to council, because there was a delay at CRMC based on some insurance requirements.
Thank you, Chief Dyer. At this time, we'll take this item out to the public. Are there any members of the public who wish to address the council? Seeing none, we'll bring it back up to the dais, we have a couple council members punched up, Member Brando, then Member Capriolio.
Thanks, Chief. Chief, on, for these three contracts, I mean, I want to take the opportunity to ask you a question, how many folks can we help? How many folks are we helping with these type of sexual assault crimes and the victims, and how extensive is the problem, and in what ways are we helping with these, with these contracts?
The sexual assault kits, we, about 150 to 175 per year that are completed by these entities. In 2015, we, we had 150 of those, which did not include Valley Children's, so about 175 or so that total. And the problem is, in terms of sexual assaults in general, is, you know, one is too many, but unfortunately, in Fresno, we have seen an increase. And that increase oftentimes is not based on what occurs between strangers as much as what happens between acquaintances, date rapes, and a lot of what we see is things that occur within the family, where children are being molested and so forth. So, about 150 to 175 examinations a year, that includes suspects, probably 90% of those that are, the examinations are for victims.
But 90% of the examinations are for victims?
Yes, because every person who comes in with the allegation of some type of sexual assault, and we know that it is a recent assault, then there is going to be a sexual assault examination performed on them. The only time, obviously, we would do it on a suspect is if we had a suspect that was identified, arrested, or a possible suspect.
Got it, okay. And then, also, we've talked a lot in recent months, overall last year, actually, due to California state legislation, we've seen more criminals out on our streets where, where they shouldn't be, but does that include this classification of criminal, criminals?
No, the individuals that are arrested for sexual assault do not fall under the Proposition 57 or AB 109, those are considered to be violent criminal acts.
Well, that, that at least is good. Well, thank you for your department taking concern for, for the victims of these type of, these type of crimes, and so, I'm going to make a motion to approve.
Thank you.
We have a motion by Member Brando, a second by Member Bretafeld.
Thank you, Council President. Chief, I had the questions on victim assistance, thank you for answering those, and thank you for asking those, Steve. My second set of questions was on the funding, this is over a three-year period, and so we'll have that grant for that three-year period, the SLESA.
Yes, the, the SLESA grant has been in existence for well over 20 years, and that funding is guaranteed every year, it's just the funding amount varies, sometimes it goes up, sometimes it goes down, and then asset forfeiture dollars as well, those vary from year to year, but generally, those are the funding sources for sexual assault exams, and then if we're not able to cover the entire cost, for whatever reason, then we come back and ask for general fund dollars.
So, the general fund will be your backup, so to speak, on...
Yes.
...this proposition. And then, do we know the amount, approximate, per year for the SLESA grant? Is there any, any indications? Just ballpark? Fantastic. And then, you mentioned asset forfeiture funds, Chief, what percentage or amount would we be receiving from the asset forfeiture fund?
Well, it, it varies, unfortunately, because the laws have changed and made it more restrictive on law enforcement to seize those funds, and then there's a delay in receiving those funds, sometimes up to three years. But generally, we're receiving somewhere around $300,000 per year in asset forfeiture monies. We utilize that, some of those funds for this, we use some of it for our helicopter program, but generally, the majority of it's used for this.
Perfect, thank you very much, thanks for your questions and answers, and keep up the good work, you guys are doing a fantastic job.
All right, thank you, Paul, thank you, Council.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, the screen is clear. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 6, 0. Moving on to the next item, this is a workshop of the Fresgo overview from the ISD.
Good morning, Council. Brian Horn, Chief Information Officer with Information Services Department. Today, we're going to give you a brief workshop on the Fresgo effort and application, some of you are familiar with it, some of you are not, so this will be good information, and hopefully, we'll fill in some of the gaps of some of the things that you may be wondering about it, and why it is important, and what it can do. So, I'm going to start at the beginning, basically, in 2015, there was an effort to bring this application into, to, into the city. Mark Standriff, PIO, Public Information Officer, he put together a campaign, and in 2015, we launched it. The mission for it was to be enhancing our citizen, community engagement, we want to provide a, a better understanding of what's out in the field, what, what the citizens are reporting, what they see are important to us, as well as providing a mechanism for transparency. The application behind it is called Public Stuff, and Public Stuff is a citizen relationship management system, and that, that is a very popular one, it has been used in other areas, in other cities, it's been used for 3-1-1 systems for Philadelphia and New York, as well as another, among other California cities. And what the cities do with it is they basically rebrand it to their liking and put their logo on it, and we did the same thing, and we called it Fresgo, which is also Fresno on the go. This particular effort was driven by our city manager, and Bruce Rudd, and I'll tell you, he's been behind this, he's been a supporter, he's been driving it, the directors have... you, he's been behind this, he's been a supporter, he's been driving it. The directors have embraced it, the departments are using it well, and it is growing very well in the city. So it's actually something that's very useful to us. And again, it's citizen-facing, it's mobile reporting, and there is actually a web application, well, a web link on the screen where you can actually report information to it. Very handy. The citizen, all they need is their smartphone, and they download the app out in the field, they can, hey, I see a pothole, I'll just take a picture of it and record it, and a service order is created, and then the departments take care of it. So let's look at the first screen on the Fresgo application. It has a number of features that are very important. First of all, we mentioned before, it's a service order system. We can see the recent requests, the citizens can see the recent requests. We can get push notifications, for example, if there's a street hazard, or a warming center or cooling center is open, we can actually push out to those who have downloaded the app, hey, you know, this is going on, take note. There 's a schedule of services to where if you have your phone available, you can say, hey, you know, when's my trash pickup? You know, what's my council district? You know, where is my policing district? So there's a number of information items that you can get from this particular screen. And it's a frequently asked questions that you can answer, that, you know, so it's got links, and it's a good source of information for the citizen upfront. But what's important to us from this particular application is that we get data. We get data from the citizen. We get to see what the activities are in the city, and you can do this a number of ways. First of all, we've mentioned your mobile app from your phone. So you can go ahead, and you're out in the field, and you can take a picture, or you can, you know, put the information in from your mobile application on your phone. There is a link on the website, which you can go and say, hey, you know, I want to go ahead and use the website, and go ahead and fill in the blanks and whatnot, and put a service order request in. You can use the call center, 621-CITY. The call center, when they take information or they take calls, the call center's actually put in the tickets or service order requests for the citizens as they take the calls. Or, in the particular case of your council districts, you have the ability as well of having, you know, the ability right then and there to put in the service order requests for your constituents. So if you get phone calls, this is a great place to report them. Because what happens after they're reported, based upon the service request type, it gets routed to the proper department, and those departments start taking action based upon what they need to do with city services. So, and also, if the citizen puts in their email address or their phone number, they get the notification that, hey, your request has been closed, or we can reach out to them and get updates to them based upon the item that they submitted. So it's very useful for us, very useful for the city. And so what, okay, so you see how we can get information from the citizens, but how important is that to us? You know, well, we get a lot of good data from this. We got a lot of useful information, which we can then take action upon or track. We can track incoming requests, we can track overdue requests, we can see what's coming in. We can also identify resource shortages or identifying issues that we have out in the field. We can check, track our service levels, and I'll have a slide on that later for you to show you exactly how we can use that. Or we can identify trends and seasonal issues or opportunities. One thing this application has allowed us to do as well is have certain efforts in the city. You all have heard about the water quality issues. Well, there was a campaign and an outreach to the citizens on water quality. If somebody wanted their water, you know, their water tested, or they had discolored water, they could report it to the system, and we actually did an outreach to them as well. So we were to understand what the issues were with this particular issue. The other one was vacant blighted housing or vacant blighted buildings, and there was actually a task force that went out in the field and reported on what they saw. So the application's not, you know, not only useful for the citizens, it's useful for us, for programs, and certain circumstances in which we could gain more information. So let's take a look at some of the reporting that we get, and this is where it becomes valuable to us, valuable to you. For example, this first particular report that we have shows the top three reported issues in a snapshot of time, and so all, you know, which is segregated by council district. Now, most of the council districts are going to have similar issues, but some of them are going to have differing issues, such as you notice the water quality in District Six, and you see that there's the street lighting issues both in Two and in Six as well. So you guys are all going to have similar issues, but these were the top three that were reported, and we can give that to you in a graphical format or in a table. Also, as we talked about before, we have a data snapshot. We can see how many issues are coming in, total we completed, the percentage closed, and this gives us an idea of which type of service requests that are coming in. And as you can see on this particular report, graffiti is really high up there, as well as abandoned vehicles. So it gives us an idea of what the issues are coming in, how many, and what the issues are in the field. I talked to you a little bit about service level review earlier. So a service level basically is how long we think it's going to take to resolve a particular item. And so this application also gives us an idea of how well we're doing with each of those service type requests. I'm going to pick on a couple of them. Graffiti's one of them. Graffiti, you know, we have a service level agreement of one day. We think we can get to the request in one day. Actually, we're beating that. It's more or less than four hours. We're getting to them within four hours. So that one's pretty good. You know, you can see that we're doing very well. Let's pick on one that is maybe not doing as well. Let's look at street lighting average. You can see that the service level agreement, we think we should be able to close those issues within 30 days, but now we're doing 44 days. Now, why is that? Well, we have the application, we can take a look and see what kinds of requests are there. We can say, okay, is it a lighting issue? Is it a pole issue? Do we need to replace a pole? Is it copper theft? What is it? Or do we just not have enough resources on the issue? So, or do we just not have enough resources, period? So we can actually drill down and find out what the issues are and say, okay, maybe 30 days isn't what we need to be doing for street, maybe it's more like 44. But it gives us an idea and an opportunity to look at the service request types and actually say, hey, you know, we're doing well here, or maybe we should evaluate how we're doing in other areas. So this information's all in good, but the information's even better when you have a map, and when you can see where the requests are coming in and when they're coming in. So again, another snapshot in time, we have a heat map that we can produce. This particular one is downtown. There were 3,701 requests during this time period that we chose to pick on, and we have graffiti, traffic signals, and illegal dumping. And of course, a heat map, you can see kind of where the requests are coming in, because the orange or redder the requests are, the more volume you're going to have for the request. If it's lighter or bluer, then you don't have as many requests. So it gives you an idea of where they're coming from. Another map that we can get, which is also very useful is, and this one we've randomly selected District Five, and take a look at illegal dumping, and so you can kind of see where it's being reported. So you've got a number of reports in different areas, and it gives us a little bit of an insight saying, okay, well, maybe an area needs to be addressed more than other areas, or maybe there's an issue more in a particular area. So we have some valuable data that we can look on and act upon. So this is predominantly what we get to see. Also, we get customer feedback. So this particular draft you see in front of you is, okay, how well are we doing? Five is great, one is poor. Well, actually, if you look, three or better, we're doing about 75%. So that's pretty good. Exactly what do we want to do? How do we want to see this? So it lets us see the, those who do choose to respond, it lets us see how well their experience is with the app and with city services. So it gives us an idea, so we can verify and take a look at those as well. So that's an overview. What are our next steps? Our next steps, well, we're going to integrate into other systems. Right now, we have integrated into Corrego, which is a work order system here in the city that Parks and Public Works uses, and that one's completed. But we have others that we're going to integrate in, like Hanson and Exela. Actually, this product is, was purchased by Exela, so it is an Exela product. So coming up in the few months, we'll do some more integrations. We're going to continue the refinement of the processes. So you can see that we get a lot of information, and we're able to validate the information and also audit the information. Under the direction of Bruce Rudd, there's an Assistant Director Task Force led by TJ Miller and Jerry Schuber, and they have been looking at different issues, process flows, customer issues as well, and trying to look into the application and make sure that the application is performing as it should be. As you can imagine, this is a big undertaking, and Fresgo has grown, so we actually need a formalized training process. So that's on the horizon, led by Annie Rini and Sanjay Patterson. Both of them are working very hard to put together an effort, a formalized training effort for all our employees here at the city, and that's up and coming. And so what else can we do with it? Well, of course, you've heard of the water quality issues and the vacant blighted housing. You know, there's opportunities for us to have inclusion and expansion of other programs. I know right now, Mark Standriff is working really hard on the promotion of it. You've seen it on the news, you know, here at the end of the, some of the rain reports, hey, if you got a pothole, go use, download the Fresgo app. And so there is an effort now to start publicizing and promoting it to get more constituents to use it. So a lot of information for you. It's very short today, and I just, hopefully, you've gotten something out of it, and I want to thank you for your time, and if there's any questions, we're here to respond.
Thank you very much. At this, well, it's a workshop, so we do not have to go out to the public. So at this time, we do have a number of council members punched up, beginning with Member Brandau.
Thank you, Council President. Good job, Brian.
Thank you.
Very, Paul, wasn't, that was a well-done presentation. Yeah.
Very timely.
Very concise. I love it. But I have some questions. Do we, is there a way to know how many people are, how many unique contacts have come to the city through Fresgo? You mentioned, you know, there's the costs. Can we tell how, what the improvement is by offering Fresgo?
Yes. I mean, we can tell, we can slice and dice the data a number of different ways. So absolutely, yes.
So Councilmember Brandau, let me give you an example. When we first launched Fresgo, and there was a lot of conversation around this building related to streetlights.
Yes.
When we launched Fresgo, I think our turn on streetlights, we were telling the public it was four months, four months, before we get out to fix your streetlight. Right now, we're at 44 days. We set a goal of 30. But there's a good example where we looked at. Now, there were some efficiencies that we gained, because rather than trying to find or just sporadically going out, trying to work on streetlights, being able to know where they were allowed us then to schedule that work within close proximity of a particular area. So there were some efficiencies gained by knowing where we need to be and scheduling that work based on a location. But we did reach a point where we just had gotten as efficient as we could with the available resources. Over last year, Mr. Mosher came to me during budget deliberations or budget discussions and said, I really need an electrician, a truck, and a couple of helpers. My response back to him was, okay, if I recommend this to the mayor, what am I going to see as far as a reduction in waiting periods? Again, streetlights at that time were at the, were trending, as I would say, it was trending very high. So the council approved hiring of another electrician, some helpers, and a truck. So now we've gone from three months to 43 days. And then the question will come up, okay, well, do we want to get below 30 days? And if so, what are the resources that we're going to need? One of the things we found out is some of these repairs are associated, not necessarily with the light being out, but the pole being damaged as a result of a car running into it. So one of the, and there's a 90-day lead time on poles, maybe even longer. So what we're looking at is a requirements contract, so that we have poles in inventory, again, in order to reduce that time. So that's what Brian's talking about. We're using this data to better manage what resources we have, and or, when we do add resources, there is a return on that investment that is objectively, can be measured objectively. And that was a whole premise, underlying premise, when we launched this back in June of 2015.
Yeah. And thank you, Bruce. So you're illustrating the efficiencies that we've already discovered with the Fresgo. Of course, we have other ways of contacting the city, but this is like the most up-to-date technological approach, which I appreciate, and sometimes I have to be drug into technology.
And the reason for this workshop, yes, there are other ways. They can call council district offices, for example, but when they do, we would ask, and Brian will be following up with your staff, that it's entered into this system. Because in that way, the data that we're looking at and how we're evaluating that data is far more accurate when we're collecting it all in one centralized location. As you recall, in the past, there were probably multiple places in which information was coming into this organization, either through council requests for services, council calls, calls into DPU, calls into the Water Department, and as a city manager. It's difficult for me at that time to kind of get my hands around how do we address all these issues, which is why all the information, all the requests, if it comes into DPU, it still goes into Fresgo. If it goes into code, it still goes into Fresgo. The reason for this workshop is to highlight the importance of us all entering this into a shared centralized system, so that therefore we can make sure that we're meeting the expectations, and more importantly, addressing the priorities of our residents, because this is the tool that allows us to do that.
Yeah, and a couple things on your comments. So sometimes it might be hard to figure out exactly how many, my original question was unique contacts, but you're right, remembering what you just said, we want everybody to use Fresgo, even if they called into a council office. And I've got the benefit of having a tech guy that works for me now, Robert Jeffers, and we do that in our council district. So in the past, going back to the streetlight situation, which we had some great leadership here between two and four, we were out replacing the streetlight bulbs for some time, and we still do it occasionally. But what we noticed was, we drew a little attention to that, but to illustrate, here's what used to happen just as recently as three years ago. They would call our council district, they'd tell us, hey, councilman, we have a street light out, it's very dark, dangerous, we don't like it. We'd say, okay, where is it? Then they would get kind of confused, there's like three lights out there. We'd say, can you go back? And there's a number on the pole, and can you, you know, and then that would, that would take about two or three days to get from their request. So it was just even three days in lag time getting us the right information, and then we would act on it. So that was a good thing, but this is much better, right? This is allowing us to get the data quickly.
Because all they got to do is go out to that pole, take a picture, click, and that picture and that location uses the GPS on your phone, it geocodes it.
Yes.
So we don't have to go, well, you can go back out and get the pole number and cross streets and get back. No, they can just go out, click, and it geocodes the location, which then, from a scheduling standpoint, makes how we respond far more efficient, because then if we have a cluster, an area, in which lights are out, the technician can go out and deal with those in one area, rather than driving from this part of town, that part of town, etc.
Right. Yeah. And even when I was out replacing light bulbs, that cluster, we used to, we were doing that when we'd choose a neighborhood, we'd see, okay, there's about eight of them, and you go out and conquer almost a whole neighborhood, rather than bouncing all over the place. So fantastic. So I'm very supportive of this. I did want to know, now, I've had a conversation with Captain Farah in Northwest Fresno District, Policing District, and he's interested into whether a police button can be added to the Fresgo app, and which we use currently. We can also use Nextdoor, which someday we should talk more about Nextdoor as well, right? These are two different application processes, and a lot of our citizens use these things, and some of them use Next. Currently, it seems to me, Brian, correct me if I'm wrong, but Fresgo is more suited for applications like potholes and streetlights, but a lot of citizens are complaining or letting us know about stuff through Nextdoor. And am I wrong? You're shaking your head.
No, Fresgo is more incapable to take calls in things such as if there's a rash of burglaries or anything else. We just have to set that code or that complaint within the data set, and it's done. We don't need a bunch of disparate systems that we're all trying to monitor.
I agree. And I've had Fresgo on my phone for over a year now, and I haven't had Nextdoor, but I am hearing about, so I've got Nextdoor now, finally, and I've been hearing about Nextdoor somewhat effective, too, although it seems to me that Fresgo is much more structured, and so probably gets us to the right department faster. So, but I am interested in a police component on Fresgo.
We can do that. But the only thing that we'll just need to watch out for is what's 911 versus not 911 related. So that's the only thing. But yes, there can be a police component on there as well. And I'd like to further discuss with you, if Bruce is okay with that, with the Nextdoor, and find out what kind of incidents you're getting and what kind of feedback you're getting through Nextdoor, so maybe we can start integrating that with what we do with Fresgo. Because I know Nextdoor is more of a collaborative citizen-to-citizen versus Fresgo is more of a citizen relationship management system. So it'd be nice to explore that and say, hey, you know, what are you getting? What are we missing? If there's some things that you don't think that could be suited for Fresgo, maybe they are, and let's take a look at them.
Yeah. You're right, Brian, and you're right, because Nextdoor is more neighbor-to-neighbor, which is also fantastic. It's like a technology extension of neighborhood. It's like a technology extension of neighborhood watch, right? In a way. So, so I know that our police, many of our police officers are themselves included on Nextdoor because they live in neighborhoods too. They see this stuff and so I would like, and so, and then in the world of people that are technically skilled and they like to report things like this, I'd like to see them, Nextdoor folks, also Fresco folks. And so that when there's a complaint with their neighbor, they can say, you know what? That's right. I'm gonna, I'm gonna connect that to Fresco and get it into the city. So, in advance of your workshop, my district did a release earlier this week, again, Robert Jeffers, my council assistant, put on Facebook about, "Help us discover potholes" in District Two. And we wanted to focus on potholes because of the rains that we just had. And the rains create potholes, and so we know that there's going to be more potholes, so help us discover those potholes and we'll address them as soon as possible. But there's a lot of other things that it could be used for, but we're, we're going to help you promote that. And every time we see you guys do a tweet, Mark, if you, City of Fresno wants to do a tweet about Fresno, we, we will definitely retweet that. We, I would love to see the number of people using Fresco double and then triple and then quadruple as the years go on and so.
We have a goal.
Yeah, you have a goal.
We have a goal.
Fantastic. I want to help you.
Seventy thousand is, is our first goal, so.
Seventy thousand.
Seventy thousand.
And where are we at now?
I believe it's eight thousand.
Okay. We, we got some work to do, but we're going to help you. So, the people that follow me on Facebook and Twitter will be able to hear about this wonderful work you're doing in Fresco. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Brian. I had some of the same questions as my council colleague, but I'll just ask a couple others. Just to, for clarification purposes, so the calls that come into the city are inputted in Fresco?
Yes, from the city, from the call center, yes.
And then I know that the council assistants have the, I guess, the software, public stuff?
Yes.
And so if they input it in public stuff, it's going to Fresco?
It's the same thing, yes.
Okay.
It's the same. Fresco is just basically the face of, so, so when we're talking about it, it is the same thing. And, and as one of the datasets that we could show, we can show how mu, how many requests or workhorses or requests, not workhorses, but requests have come in by council district.
Yep.
Okay, perfect.
So, so yes, public stuff is rebranded as Fresco. It's one system, it's the same thing, so that, that should help out.
Okay, perfect. Just a couple other things. I agree with, you know, my council colleagues that this is a great thing. I am all about technology and really using technology as some, as a form of getting much more efficient in us addressing the concerns that are out there. Essentially now really our community residents are, really are eyes and ears to the issues that we are faced. So, I'm excited about all the good feedback and data that we're collecting from the community. One, one issue that I do have, I guess, is the lacking ability to create reports. I do want to say thank you to Annie. I know she's been working with our office to try to, because I've asked for some data, specifically to my district. I've been wanting to share it with my constituents. I'm having a community coffee meeting and it's still been challenging to get really good data from the district as to what are some of the major concerns. And so, I'd like to figure out how my office can have access to actual data that will, you know, help me be a better advocate when it comes to budget time. I know that you guys will be also sorting through that data to figure out how to prioritize the, the resources that we have, but I'd like to be able to figure out how my staff can also have better access to that data so that when we're speaking out, speaking to our constituents, we're able to understand the concerns and needs that exist within our districts. I don't know if you can speak to that, because we've attempted to get some reports. When we print them out, they're about five hundred pages. And so, they're not very useful to us. And so, we're trying to figure, I know the data that you provided, some of those samples, great stuff. I'd like to see how we can customize it to figure out what is happening in District One.
Yeah, there's a, there's a web portal that can give you some very high-level reports without getting down into the granular, like, work order. So, if you want to know abandoned vehicles, streetlights, street trees, sidewalks, you can see it by the entire district. I mean, we can slice and dice it by district. You can slice and dice it by particular complaint, or you can slice and dice it by the top ten or top twenty. I mean, it'll take everything that we have in Fresco and then by district show you, what's the number one complaint, number two complaint, number three complaint, down the, and then well, is the amount of time it's taking and, and the open. But those are the kind of, kind of can reports that Annie and Sandra can provide for each district.
Yeah, that's awesome.
And show you how to get at it.
And so, I just want to ask if we can learn how to do it or?
That's part of the workshop, is first getting, getting council staff to put it into the system and then getting them familiar with that and comfortable with doing some of those high-level data analysis.
Okay.
So, that's one of our concerns and we're working towards that. So, what your concern is, it's in the works, we're working with you on that.
Perfect. Thank you so much. The other thing that I wanted to just bring up or, and ask, our current now website, is it tied to Fresco? How, how does it work together?
Fresco is independent. Okay? It's an independent application, it's a hosted application, and how we tie it together is basically through a web link on our website. So, there's not really a link to it. You can get to it from there, but it's an independent application.
Okay, so this is separate. I just have some issues with our new website.
This is completely different.
So, maybe, I don't know if we can set up some time to chat. I just, yeah, I have some issues with kind of.
Mr. Standriff can meet with you on, on the concerns you have about the website.
Perfect. Thank you so much. Those are all the questions. Again, thank you for providing a very thorough presentation.
You're welcome.
Yeah. Hi. Thanks for your presentation. Fantastic presentation. I, I want to commend City Manager Rudd and Mark Standriff and all the folks that have worked on this. I've, people in my district use it, they tell me they use it, and it's just a phenomenal way to communicate with the citizens we represent. I mean, what we do here is about accountability and accessibility and this exponentially makes sure that we do both. And so, I think it's a phenomenal thing. I think it's going to continue to grow. I, I think we all know it's going to continue to grow. So, I just want to congratulate all of you for just a phenomenal job in making us all more accountable and accessible. I see, you know, you look at how quickly we're responding and those timelines, that's all data, that's all ways we can improve. So, I think it's just a fantastic, phenomenal thing and thank you.
Thank you.
Member Capriolio and then Member Chavez.
Thank you. Good job and congratulations to all of you for developing this. What I do is I put it in a binder and categorize it like you've kind of refined what you're trying to do as well, so I appreciate this information. For my district, graffiti, of course, as in every district, is number one, but for me, number two is general assistance. And I haven't seen, what does that mean? Is there a definition? Because you have, we have abandoned vehicles, all the different categories, but I didn't see general assistance. And I don't know if it's another.
So, so general assistance basically is, is a staff category for what we do behind the scenes and so there, it could be a number of different items that, that it could be, but it's not in any one in particular. So, at that particular item, I don't believe you need to worry about. I mean, that's not something you need to worry about, general assistance. I'll, I can get you a better definition of it, but it's basically for internal controls.
All right. We'll have a conversation maybe and define that for me.
Sure.
Second thing I wanted to mention was, is there a way to do Fresco for vagrancy and vagrant camps and we can connect that with MapPoint or whatever services that are available?
Absolutely. In fact, we've, we've had some come in with, because they don't fall under a particular category, so we could certainly put a button for, for, I don't know if I call it encampments, but homeless issues or vagrancy issue or, sometimes it may have fallen under illegal dumping, we've had that happen, but we can certainly add that to the, to the list.
That'd be great. Behind my law office, I had a little encampment there, so finally, we're able to resolve that issue with the assistance of the police department, which I appreciate. But I was thinking if we had a Fresco, could snap that and?
Right.
We're trying to snap it.
And then, then I can, I can call up Mr. Dewey and ask, Sergeant Dewey, and ask him if he's been paying attention to the data on Fresco.
Perfect. And then.
I love it when I call, trust me.
His phone's ringing all the time, I'm sure. And then I wanted to thank Jerry and TJ for your connection with this. And in Santa Cruz, they have a thing called Citizen Connect and it's a county-wide program. So, I've got some information on that that I'll convey to you folks and we can compare and contrast and further refine our system as, as they have tried to do. And it's pretty, it's pretty interesting. I think we're ahead of them, to be honest with you. But it's always good to see what other people are doing and how we can improve our system and maybe help them as well. So, thanks for the whole team and all you do. Appreciate it.
City Manager actually answered my question and I don't want to crash the blah-blah award competition going on over there on that side of the dais, so with that, I'll yield.
The screen's clear. Thank you for your presentation.
Thank, thank you very much.
Our next item is 3E, the submission and acceptance of City of Fresno comprehensive, it's the CAFER and the Comprehensive Annual Debt Report from the Finance Department.
Good morning, council members. Mike Lima, Finance Director, Controller. I am very pleased to be here today to present for your acceptance the Fiscal Year 2016 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, or CAFER, and the Fiscal Year 2016 Comprehensive Annual Debt Report, or CATER. The CAFER shows policymakers and citizens of Fresno and any other interested parties the financial position of the city as of June 30th, 2016. There's a lot of good news in this CAFER, most notably that it contains an unqualified opinion from our external auditors, Brown Armstrong. I would like to note some other highlights at the organizational level, meaning the city as a whole, so that's all funds combined, enterprises and governmental funds. We have $3.5 billion of assets, that's a new record for our organization. There was $752 million of revenue, up 1.8% over FY15, a record year of revenue for our organization. Expenses remained at $596.6 million and we have a pension asset valued at $295.6 million. We are the only city in California and one of a handful in the United States with a pension asset. Further details on the city's overall financial condition and the financial condition of specific funds can be found in the CAFER's Management Discussion and Analysis, which begins on page five. The other key document we are presenting is the CATER. Submission of a CATER is required under debt management policies the council adopted in 2009 and amended in 2010. The CATER gives a concise look at how much debt the city has outstanding, the sources of payment for that debt, and the city's debt metrics as compared to those of other large California cities. As I said, there's plenty of good news in this CAFER, but there are a few points noted in this book that I'd like to emphasize, which show that there's still work to be done to improve the city's financial condition. I'd like to highlight two of those points. First, Fiscal Year 16 general fund revenues actually declined by just under a million dollars from FY15's revenue levels. The cause was revenues from the state that were received in FY15 but were not in FY16. However, while general fund revenues dropped, general fund expenses increased by $27.7 million, mostly due to increased personnel costs in police and fire. Obviously, increasing expenses at a faster rate than revenues cannot continue for long. It remains to be seen whether FY16's revenue picture was an anomaly or if it was the start of a new pattern. Revenues are also the basis for my second point. As I mentioned, revenues for the organization as a whole set a record of $752.8 million, up 1.8%. But a little deeper look at the numbers tells a slightly different story. In looking at the components of that overall increase, we see that charges for services were up 6.3% and tax revenues were up 4%. So, if those components were up 6.3 and 4%, how come overall revenues only went up 1.8? Well, that's because our grant revenues fell. Capital grants fell 1.7% and operating grants fell a staggering 20.8%. What this tells us is that we, as an organization, are still very dependent on grant revenues to meet our operational and capital needs. That's something we need to keep in mind as we approach the FY18 budget. I hope these examples convey to you that there's still room for improvement in the city's finances. That being said, it is clear that the plan to rebuild those finances is working, given the progress that has been made, progress which has been acknowledged by rating agencies like Moody's and Fitch in their upgrades of our credit. So, long as we continue to follow that plan, we should attain a financial structure that is suitable for an organization our size. One housekeeping matter to read into the record, there's a date on page 13 of the Controller's letter that reads June 19th, 2017. It should read January 19th, 2017. Last year, we brought the CAFER and CATER to council in March. This year, we're bringing it to you in January. The improvement would not have been possible without the hard work and diligence of a team of people, many of whom worked on the CAFER for the first time. Most of them are here in council chambers and I'd like them to stand up to be recognized. The CAFER/CATER team is Margaret Bell, Kim Jackson, Roberta Coop, Phil Hardcastle, Karina Barberite, Aubrey Carcula, Juanita Barnett, Indavir Boparay, Juan Rios, Tim Tinnell, Jose Barbosa, Anita Villariel, and Lily Bonuelos. They have earned all of our appreciation for a job well done. I would also like to thank Brown Armstrong for the audit services they provide in service of this report. They have been true partners in the effort to bring this CAFER and CATER to you. Thank you for your time. I would be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much.
And if I could, Council President. I'd like to acknowledge and, and first of all, thank all the Finance Department employees who've contributed to this. I want to thank Mike for, Mr. Lima for his leadership. If you recall, historically, we didn't receive this report until probably June of the following year. When Mr. Lima became the Controller, I set a goal of having it by at least May. He's exceeded my expectations by the fact that you're seeing the CAFER now in January. Mr. Lima and I, as will Mr. Hardcastle and others, were up in San Francisco last week meeting with rating agencies, discussing what I think is a success story, because as a lot of you are aware, we were put in the same bucket as a lot of other cities such as Stockton, San Bernardino, even Detroit. Some of that was perpetuated by the fact that our CAFER was so late that a lot of the agencies, those stakeholders who, who keep an eye on what happens here as well as in other cities, I was, they were looking at information that was a year old. And while we thought we were on our way off and, and walking from the brink of bankruptcy, we were still being reported by many of the agencies as being still one of those cities that you had to watch. We were meeting last week with, again, with the rating agencies to tell them the story, most importantly, Standard and Poor's, who hasn't changed our rating for three years and we are still currently with that agency at junk bond status. Now, hopefully, we've convinced them that things have turned around. And one of the things that we pointed to was not only the fact that we were able to hand across the table to them the draft, which was almost the final version except for some changes in text, but we were able to hand them the CAFER. We were able to give them where we are now. And we also highlight a lot of the work that was done by the previous mayor, administration, and the current mayor, as well as all of you, and how, and I think I used the term, this was the council that got tired of continuing to kick the cans and that by just accepting what we had to deal with, and it was a very painful period, that this council, this organization is completely different organization than we were even four or five, maybe even more than ten or twenty years ago. In fact, our balance sheet is probably the best it's been in probably twenty or thirty years. The policies and the changes that management, council, administration have implemented over the last three or four years resonated with Standard and Poor. They were impressed. The fact that we're talking about things such as life cycle costs, which most agencies don't even discuss, don't even want to acknowledge exists, was also, they were impressed by that. And then the overall approach that we've taken and the recognition that while it was a very painful time, it was also probably something this organization needed, it was a reality check. And rather than just immediately jumping back and trying to restore services as quickly as, as possible, you, you toed the line and you recognized that there's another recession that's going to come. We just don't know when. Some of us think it's going to happen sooner than later. Some of the numbers are indicating that, at least from the sales tax perspective, that the economy's beginning to cool a little bit. It's not that we're falling off the cliff, but we're just not growing at the pace that we were at the last couple of years. But the fact that you took an action last year when you adopted the budget to confirm and affirm going forward that the RDA repayment would be set aside to build a 10% operating reserve and would continue to fund that reserve until 10% was achieved, and what you've heard from me, I think is still a little light, but nevertheless, the commitment this council made to, to, to put those dollars by resolution into that reserve until a 10% reserve was built also resonated with, with the representatives from the rating agencies. So, you should be applauded as well for your leadership. I know on any given Thursday, we're all being stretched to find resources to meet whatever need it is, but the discipline that you have shown over the last four years, four to five years, is going to, and I believe we'll find out within the next three to four weeks, will come back with an increase in our rating from Standard &amp; Poor. We leaned on Moody's and Fitch as hard as we could, but they go, you know, guys, we already gave you a bump up, so, you know, we can't go back that fast. But there is also a direct benefit of that improved rating that we hope will be able to provide us some additional resources that Mr. Lima's been working on for the last six months, that we hopefully can present to council by the end of February, and a strategy to help reduce some of our costs associated with our ongoing debt by just the fact that we get a better rate because of our improved financial position. So I want to also acknowledge your support over the last four or five years. I know this has been a difficult time, but I think we're going to see the fruits of those efforts within the short-term fruit, at least by the fact that we're going to see an opportunity and present an opportunity to you, and it wouldn't be possible if it wasn't for your willingness to learn from a very painful lesson and not deviate from the path that we set forward over the last several years. So thank you again for your support as we went through that very painful time.
Bruce, I have three words for you and the team. Congratulations. Thank you. Sincerely.
Really? Good job. Member Brettafeld.
Yeah, I have just a couple of questions for you, Mike. Thanks for your report. You talk about investments in short-term rates. What are the, I mean, imagine you get an interest rate, what is that on these investments?
Under our investment policy, we invest basically in bonds that are five years or less in maturity. So in order to maximize the rate that we're earning right now in our treasury interest pool, we're pretty much, a lot of our bonds are at the five-year mark that we own, but under state law and our investment policy, we have to purchase short-term, relatively short-term investments. We can't sink our money in stocks, we can't sink our money in derivatives, we have to pretty much invest only in bonds.
Only, is that, that's mandated that it only be bonds?
That is both, well, it's not entirely bonds, but primarily bonds. But yes, it's mandated by state law as well as our own investment policy.
And so what do you know, oh, I imagine you know what the rate of return has been on those investments?
Right now, our average rate of return has been about 1%. That's what we're earning on the treasury pool at this time. Interest rates have ticked up in the last month or so, and so we're looking at opportunities to buy in, but frankly, in anything under five years, you're looking at about 2% right now is really what the interest rate is, so.
So I see on page 13, it says during Fiscal Year 2016, interest was earned from the following instruments, and you generally got about $1 million in earned interest. And that's based on how much money? I mean, what did that, what was the principal amount of money that earned?
It was about half a billion dollars, 500 million, and that earned, that earned the amount that you're discussing.
Okay, so that's the thing I'm wondering. I mean, I'm wondering if we can do better. I understand how people before the stock market crash were gambling with the stock market, and I'm not suggesting that, but I'm wondering if we can be doing better than 1% when you have a half a billion dollars to invest, if we had a diversified investment. This might have been five times that, 10 times that, but I understand you have restrictions and regulations, I understand that. This is taxpayer money that I'm talking about, but there must be some way to, you know, over the last eight years, investments have steadily grew. This has been, you know, 1%, could have been much better, but again, is there some leeway in there to have some safe diversified portfolio that can yield a better return for the taxpayer?
You're asking the same exact question the city manager has asked me, and the short answer, we have explored this and explored it, and the short answer is we are currently complying with state law as it is written, which the primary goal of that state law is to preserve the principle. It is not to earn interest. And so we run into that state wall issue over and over again when it comes to our investments. We would love to invest in other opportunities, but state law prohibits us at this time.
Well, it prohibits you from being too aggressive, but you're saying there's some leeway in there other than just?
A little bit, like for instance, we can invest in CDs. Well, they don't pay much more than a bond. We can invest in bond mutual funds, very specific bond mutual funds. They're not paying much more. We could make a little more money because they have a little lower cost structure than buying the bonds themselves, but other than that, I mean, so yes, there is a little bit of leeway, but it's?
It's all fixed rate.
It's all fixed rate, yeah.
So that's why, over the last six months, we have been focusing on some things, and the council approved this, what was it, about two months ago, a restructuring of some, restructuring, I won't say debt because it's not debt, it's cash, that is sitting within the wastewater division that we believe that once we, and there's some debts, there's some bonds that are going to be callable within the next two to three years, we're setting money aside now, matching that, make a long story short, that strategy will save the ratepayers, and we're not earning money, but that strategy will save the ratepayers almost a quarter of a billion dollars in interest earnings by putting these bonds, paying them off early. The other strategy is, again, the reason we went to San Francisco is while we can't earn as much, are there some things that we can do to reduce the interest that we're paying on our existing debt? And we believe there lies a great opportunity, not just for the general fund, but for the enterprise departments, which is why we are anxiously awaiting the results from Standard &amp; Poor, because a lot of the marketplace will look at the Standard &amp; Poor as well as Fitch and Moody, but they do put a lot of weight in that, including the bond insurer, who would then adjust maybe their costs associated with that. We believe that as long as interest rates don't tick up too much differently than what we have been assuming, we'll be able to come back to council at the end of February with a strategy that would significantly reduce the annual cost of our debt payments. And so we are looking forward to bringing that back, but we're, again, waiting for Standard &amp; Poor to make a decision as to what they're going to do with our current rating.
And just a question on page 20 on the chart, when you do the rankings, and if you have ninth and 10th, I mean, the ranking, as I understand, the 10th is the lowest, so are you reflecting that Fresno's doing very well, or?
This is the CATER you're referring to, am I correct?
This is the analysis, the 10 largest cities?
Yes.
Yeah, comparative statistics?
Yes. Depending on the metric that you're looking at, yes, it can either, like for instance, per capita income, we are the lowest of the 10 cities, but if you're looking at also general fund balance of revenues, no, we are the lowest of the 10 cities at this time.
Okay. All right. Thank you so much for your report, appreciate it.
No problem.
Mike, I'm going to ask you to go to the other page, which shows the unfunded future liability of pensions associated that other cities don't necessarily have to report, the credit rating agencies don't seem to look at, but as Mike pointed out, and what page is that on, Mike?
So if you look at page roman numeral six, which is in the Controller's Transmittal Report?
It's at the front?
You will, yeah, it's at the front of the CAFR itself. You'll see the net pension liabilities for all the top 25 cities by population in California. Los Angeles is 7.6 billion. San Jose is 2.3 billion, San Francisco 2.3 billion, San Diego 1.7 billion. These are unfunded pension liabilities. That means the bill is going to come due someday. We do not have that. We have a $295 million surplus in our, or pension asset in our pension system.
We are one of the few cities?
We are the only one in California and one of very few in the nation.
Only two in the entire country with a pension surplus.
Yeah.
So when other cities, and we half joking, mentioned to both Fitch, Moody's, and Standard &amp; Poor that, given our pension or no pension liability, and the other cities' pension liability, we would assume that when they go to change or look at our rating, that they're going to take into consideration our position versus those and maybe mirror those ratings that they already, or they have given to some of these other cities, knowing their future liability associated with their pensions, and they kind of laugh and go, well, we don't really look at that, because the assumption is, is that as those costs continue to go up, their general funds are just going to write a check to cover it. It's an obligation that they're just going to have to cover, so they don't necessarily, I guess from an accounting or reporting standpoint, look at that as a liability, but anybody who runs a public agency such as ours knows for a fact that those are the same dollars that you use to provide services. So it's unique, so we use it as an opportunity to highlight, again, the financial strength that this organization is now in.
And you attribute the pension fund that we have, which is so outstanding, due to the, obviously being well managed, but also the drop program?
I would put more of it on well managed than the drop program. That's the primary driver, yeah.
Okay. Thank you so much.
All right, the screen is clear. Thank you and your team very much.
Thank you.
For everything that you do for us. We'll move on to our next item now.
Council President?
Yes.
The opportunity for the council to vote to accept the CAFR.
Okay. Well, should we go out to the public if we're going to vote?
Yes.
Okay. At this time, we'll go out to the public. Is there anyone who'd like to comment to the city council on the CAFR? Okay, seeing none, we'll bring it back up to the dais, and the screen is clear. We have a motion to approve by Member Brandow and a second by Member Brettafeld. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed, none. Thank you very much. Good job. All right, excellent. Now I see some folks out here. At this time, let's take unscheduled communication. Is there anyone here who wishes to address the city council on any item not contained on the agenda? You're welcome to come forward for unscheduled communication? No? Okay, at this time, we'll close unscheduled communication, move to item 4A, City Council. City Council Boards and Commissions Communications Reports, Assignments, all that stuff. If there is anything that's vacant, what, do we fill it at this time, or?
Council President, there are a number of items that require council action. If you wanted to, you could address it globally and say for all of those existing seats, you're refilling with the same appointments, unless you want to change the appointments for those seats. I can identify those if you'd like.
I'd like Member Chavez to participate because he is new to the council, maybe he can, maybe there's something that he would like to take on that maybe one of us who's done it, been there, done that, would like to give it up. So, you know what we'll do at this time is we'll move into closed session, and then after closed session, I'd like to go to lunch promptly at noon and then resume at 1:30 and then finish our meeting for the day, so.
All right, in closed session, we have several cases, existing litigation, Shaney versus the city, Noble and Nelson versus the city, and Labor Local 39. There's an opportunity for the public to speak on those items before we go into closed session, too. session, too.[158.72]
And then you can make your comments.
My name is Gary Dusko and, um, two zero two nine at six way. First of all, man, I can't believe this. Two thousand and fifteen, I know Clint to see a hall. This man here is my favorite guy because he wrote the, he wrote the letter for my mom and he sit right over there and now we got new guy right there. I don't know him, I don't know him.
Two new council members.
I know, but he's supposed to be over there, not right there, but it's alright, but, but, uh, man, I can't believe this Clint is on the, on this side because he's a good man because it's a tough work than me to see a heart and this young man right there give me a brand new bike in two thousand and fifteen, the ancestor of my old one bike I had because it got stolen, so what's what he did for me.
Gary, what can we do for you today?
Me?
Yeah.
I'd like to see you because you're my buddy. Yeah, I gotta make sure your good job and don't be pick on her, don't be like kids doing because I remember this because at that time I came here, she told, she told Pat, don't be bully.
So you don't have any, any grievance or anything you need from the council today?
Yeah, I do.
What is it?
Uh, about the buses, Clint, uh, sorry my name, but, uh, let's go and make some more of the buses, you know when they're gonna be get done?
Sure, we're absolutely happy to answer your question for you.
Okay.
Um, are you finished?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll answer your question now. Um, city manager, can you just briefly, I, I could do it, but I wouldn't be maybe the best at explaining what's happening. They're, they're gonna completely redo and remodel that, that, uh, whole facility, make it clean and make it safe, make it more serviceable, uh, and that's gonna be out of commission for maybe eight or nine months, right? So that's it, so that it's gonna look totally different, um, but while it's not in use, we're actually gonna staff, we'll still be there if you need help, right? There's still staff in the little office, so there, there'll still be employees there that can help you.
Okay, then, and also there's, uh, I saw the couple people is, uh, that had no name tags and nothing because I did talk to the supervisor and, uh, the same one and I already told them, I said, "What's your max new for?" Because yeah, I have one. I said, "Man, you have to work, you have to get them something, man, because if you don't, I'm gonna talk to my client."
Well, I, we're, we're gonna, um, so I think probably by fall, by fall, it'll be open by fall.
Good.
To, to better serve you.
Okay.
All right, tell, tell your mom I said hi.
I will, all right.
Thanks for coming today.
Just leave her alone.
We'll take care of her. Thank you, Gary. All right, folks, uh, let's, let's move on to boards and commissions, communications, reports, assignments, appointments, um, councilman, councilmember Chavez, do you want to be on anything? The new, for the new folks, is there stuff you want to be on, 'cause, uh, let's see, there's a vacancy on the finance and audit committee? That's a good one. Uh, there's, uh, you don't want to be on anything, Louise? You got a lot of projects going? 'Cause I got the, let's see. You're it, committee of one. Uh, does anybody have any report or anything that they want to talk about? Member Soria?
I just, I was gonna ask, I know that I'm on, let me see, where is the one that I missed? I am an alternate for the, um, Upper Kings Basin. I think I'm gonna get off of that because I haven't even, I, I haven't been going because Steve is the main person, so.
Oh, you're the alternate, and you don't want to be the alternate?
No.
Oh, come on.
No, so you can take me off of that.
She wants to be, can we just give up our positions or can we vote her to remain there? City attorney? We can't ju, you can't just do that.
No, can you?
Can we just do, can we just, just throw everything and say, "Oh, I quit"?
Here's the lawyer answer, it depends.
It's a what?
There are some actions today that the council, there's nothing for the council to do, there are some items that require the council to either reappoint the existing members or appoint new people, and then there are some where the members serve at will and you can change it if you would like.
Can we just, uh, can, can someone, I can make a motion that we just reappoint everybody to everything and you can put me in, I'll be Steve's alternate on the, whatever it is?
You could do that.
Okay, let's do that. Um, so I'll make a motion, uh, that, uh, we just continue and, and reappoint everyone to everything and I will now be councilmember Brand, unless there's somebody else that want, you want to do it?
No, 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 I was gonna talk about it.
Oh, please, member Brettafeld, please.
Yeah, I would be interested in the finance and audit committee, I see there's a vacancy there, I'd be willing to do that. And then just one other thing, um, I was speaking with councilmember Soria, uh, about the sister cities, I, I don't know what the status is, how we approach sister cities, uh, but I certainly have an interest in that, I know a, a number of people don't, but I, I certainly do, I know she does, um, is there, what's the process for that?
I thi, I don't think it's an official, uh, it's not, it's not an official capacity, but, um, the sister cities organization is very involved and robust, I think that they're in need of somebody for, uh, I think you have, yeah, they're, they're, they do three or four cities and I don't think they have a council member for each, so.
We have actually more than three cities.
So I, I mean, my recommendation, what's the, the nice lady's name that runs it?
It's actually, it's Lisa.
She doesn't run anymore?
Lisa, now it is, you guys want?
Well, we'll get you pointed in the right direction and then you can, you can get involved in that.
Yeah, definitely be interested in that, sure.
Okay, so what we'll do then is we'll reappoint everyone to everything, except we'll appoint member Brettafeld to the finance and audit committee and we will remove member Soria from the King, Upper Kings Basin Integrated Regional Water Management, JPA, I don't know why she would want to not go to that, um, so.
I haven't gone to a meeting because they haven't needed me.
No.
But I have a question.
Go ahead.
The question is on the Fresno-Covas Metropolitan Solid Waste Commission, are we removing that? Because we, I think we closed it.
It's gone.
Yeah, so I think that we need to remove it from this list.
Okay.
Yes, on here it says it's been dissolved, so next time it would not appear on the list.
It will not appear on the list, so the changes are though, we'll remove that, um, item of the dissolved group, we'll add member Brettafeld to the finance and audit committee, uh, and we will remove, uh, member Soria and replace with, uh, member Olivier to the Upper Kings Basin Integrated Regional Water Extravaganza. Um, and I will make that motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And nobody in opposition, so that passes. Congratulations. We'll move down to item four B. This is a resolution directing the cancellation of consultant services agreement with Bert's Rosa Strategy and for this, um, we will, wait, um, city attorney, was I supposed to go out to the public about our committee assignments?
Uh, really should, yes.
Really, can, is there anyone from the public that wants to address? Seeing none, we'll return to the dais, okay. Um, so now we'll move to item four B and should turn it over to member Brettafeld.
Yes, uh, council, this is an item brought forward by councilmember Soria and myself, uh, it's directing the cancellation of, uh, consultant agreement with Bert's Rosa Strategy and Creative, uh, for a community engagement regarding parks and trails. Uh, I would, I mean, this, I, I don't know if this is, um, unprecedented, I don't know if it's been done before, but I mean, I think it's a significant reason and I want to explain some of my reasons for wanting to terminate, uh, this contract. A little context, um, December seventeenth, two thousand and fifteen, we approved a two-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand, twenty-seven-thousand-dollar contract for ATP, um, and had hired consultants to do that work. Uh, that work is for pedestrian and, uh, bikeway trails and so we hired for a quarter of a million dollars consultants to do that work. Uh, and May nineteenth, two thousand and sixteen, uh, we approved, uh, for the master plan, consultants for four-hundred-and-forty-nine-thousand dollars to do that work. So the total is six-hundred-and-seventy-seven-thousand dollars worth of consultants to do this master parks plan in this ATP, uh, project. Uh, in the ATP plan, uh, the contract with the consultants, they have as part of it, and I'm looking right at the agreement, they have as part of that, uh, service, the scope of work that they would do for ATP, these consultants would have a public outreach and community engagement, uh, for that. And, uh, one of the first project steps would be to coordinate with the city to develop a community engagement plan and develop a comprehensive strategy to obtain feedback from the public. Uh, they also would commit, uh, to doing community workshop and events, the public workshops would be a method of listening to the needs and opportunities expressed by city residents, business owners and other key stakeholders so that the plan reflects their experience. So that was for two-hundred-and-twenty-seven-thousand dollars for the ATP consultants to have a community outreach. As part of the four-hundred-and-forty-nine-thousand-dollar consultants that we hired for the Fresno Parks Master Plan update, they also had a community needs assessment component as part of that contract and they were going to meet with, uh, people in the community as well as stakeholders to help develop that master parks plan. They were going to meet with elected officials, city staff, business community, the Fresno Economic Opportunities Commission, civic groups that included legal women voters, the Rotary and neighborhood groups. So they were going to do a lot of outreach to the community as well and that's what we were spending six-hundred-and-seventy-six-thousand dollars to do. Then on October thirteenth, two thousand and sixteen, last year, only, you know, short three, four months ago, uh, the council approved, uh, the consultant services with Bert's Rosa for a quote "community engagement for parks and trails," end quote, within the city of Fresno. And they were going to develop a communications branding and outreach strategy that ensured residents from across the city had a clear understanding of the vision and an opportunity to shape the priorities within the broad range of investments identified in those plans. Uh, in this, um, staff report, it was talked about they would develop again a community engagement piece and there were two other bidders for that project and I think it's important to note that, uh, one of them was, uh, Green Media Creations, that was a hundred-and-forty-five-thousand dollars and Southwest Strategies, that was forty-five-thousand dollars. And I reviewed their proposals as well and the selection committee consisted of staff, I'm not sure what's that, but they decided, uh, to support the Bert's Rosa contract for a hundred-and-seventy-two-thousand dollars for this, uh, community outreach. Now, what was a little confusing for me as I looked through this.
I had no name tags and nothing because I did talk to the supervisor and the same one. And I already told them, I said, "What's your max new for?" Because yeah, I have one. I said, "You have to work, you have to get them something, man, because if you don't, I'm gonna talk to my client."
Well, we're gonna, so I think probably by fall, by fall. It'll be open by fall to better serve you.
Okay.
All right, tell your mom I said hi.
I will, all right.
Thanks for coming today.
Just leave her alone.
We'll take care of her. Thank you, Gary. All right, folks, let's move on to boards and commissions, communications, reports, assignments, appointments. Councilmember Chavez, do you want to be on anything? For the new folks, is there stuff you want to be on? Because, let's see, there's a vacancy on the Finance and Audit Committee. That's a good one. There's a, you don't want to be on anything, Louise?
I have a lot of projects.
You've got a lot of projects going? Because I got the, let's see. You're it? Committee of one. Does anybody have any report or anything that they want to talk about? Member Soria?
I just, I was gonna ask, I know that I'm on, let me see, where is the one that I missed? I am an alternate for the Upper Kings Basin. I think I'm gonna get off of that because I haven't even, I haven't been going because Steve is the main person, so.
Oh, you're the alternate? And you don't want to be the alternate?
No.
Oh, come on.
No. So you can take me off of that.
She wants to be, can we just give up our positions or can we vote her to remain there? City Attorney? We can't, you can't just do that.
No? Can you nominate to eliminate?
Can we just throw everything and say, "Oh, I quit"?
Here's the lawyer answer, it depends.
It's a what?
There are some actions today that the council, there's nothing for the council to do. There are some items that require the council to either reappoint the existing members or appoint new people. And then there are some where the members serve at will and you can change it if you would like.
Can we just, can someone, I can make a motion that we just reappoint everybody to everything and you can put me in, I'll be Steve's alternate on the, whatever it is?
You could do that.
Okay, let's do that. So I'll make a motion that we just continue and reappoint everyone to everything and I will now be Councilmember Brand, unless there's somebody else that wants, you want to do it?
No, 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 I was gonna talk about it.
Oh, please, Member Brettafeld, please.
Yeah, I would be interested in the Finance and Audit Committee. I see there's a vacancy there, I'd be willing to do that. And then just one other thing, I was speaking with Councilmember Soria about the sister cities. I don't know what the status is, how we approach sister cities, but I certainly have an interest in that I know a number of people don't, but I certainly do, I know she does. Is there, what's the process for that?
I don't think it's an official, it's not, it's not an official capacity, but the sister cities organization is very involved and robust. I think that they're in need of somebody for, I think you have, yeah, they're, they do three or four cities and I don't think they have a council member for each.
We have actually more than three cities.
So I mean, my recommendation, what's the nice lady's name that runs it?
It's actually, it's Lisa.
She doesn't run anymore?
Lisa, now it is, you guys won't.
Well, we'll get you pointed in the right direction and then you can, you can get involved in that.
Yeah, definitely be interested in that, sure.
Okay, so what we'll do then is we'll reappoint everyone to everything except we'll appoint Member Brettafeld to the Finance and Audit Committee and we will remove Member Soria from the Upper Kings Basin Integrated Regional Water Management, JPA. I don't know why she would want to not go to that, so.
I haven't gone to a meeting because they haven't needed me.
No.
But I have a question.
Go ahead.
The question is on the Fresno-Covis Metropolitan Solid Waste Commission, are we removing that? Because we, I think we closed it.
It's gone.
Yeah, so I think that we need to remove it from this list.
Okay.
Yes, on here it says it's been dissolved, so next time it would not appear on the list.
It will not appear on the list. So the changes are though, we'll remove that item of the dissolved group, we'll add Member Brettafeld to the Finance and Audit Committee, and we will remove Member Soria and replace with Member Olivier to the Upper Kings Basin Integrated Regional Water Extravaganza. And I will make that motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And nobody in opposition, so that passes. Congratulations. We'll move down to item 4B. This is a resolution directing the cancellation of consultant services agreement with Burt's Rosa Strategy. And for this, we will, wait, City Attorney, was I supposed to go out to the public about our committee assignments?
I really should, yes.
Really, can, is there anyone from the public that wants to address? Seeing none, we'll return to the dais. Okay. So now we'll move to item 4B and turn it over to Member Brettafeld.
Yes, Council, this is an item brought forward by Councilmember Soria and myself. It's directing the cancellation of a consultant agreement with Burt's Rosa Strategy and Creative for a community engagement regarding parks and trails. I would, I mean, this, I don't know if this is unprecedented, I don't know if it's been done before, but I mean, I think it's a significant reason and I want to explain some of my reasons for wanting to terminate this contract. A little context, December 17, 2015, we approved a $225,000, $27,000 contract for ATP and had hired consultants to do that work. That work is for pedestrian and bikeway trails, and so we hired for a quarter of a million dollars consultants to do that work. On May 19, 2016, we approved for the master plan consultants for $449,000 to do that work. So the total is $677,000 worth of consultants to do this master parks plan in this ATP project. In the ATP plan, the contract with the consultants, they have as part of, and I'm looking right at the agreement, they have as part of that service, the scope of work that they would do for ATP, these consultants would have a public outreach and community engagement for that. And one of the first project steps would be to coordinate with the city to develop a community engagement plan and develop a comprehensive strategy to obtain feedback from the public. They also would commit to doing community workshop and events. The public workshops would be a method of listening to the needs and opportunities expressed by city residents, business owners, and other key stakeholders so that the plan reflects their experience. So that was for $227,000 for the ATP consultants to have a community outreach. As part of the $449,000 consultants that we hired for the Fresno Parks Master Plan update, they also had a community needs assessment component as part of that contract. And they were going to meet with people in the community as well as stakeholders to help develop that master parks plan. They were going to meet with elected officials, city staff, business community, the Fresno Economic Opportunities Commission, civic groups, that included legal women voters, the Rotary, and neighborhood groups. So they were going to do a lot of outreach to the community as well, and that's what we were spending $676,000 to do. Then on October 13, 2016, last year, only a short three, four months ago, the council approved the consultant services with Burt's Rosa for a quote, "community engagement for parks and trails," end quote, within the city of Fresno. And they were going to develop a communications branding and outreach strategy that ensured residents from across the city had a clear understanding of the vision and an opportunity to shape the priorities within the broad range of investments identified in those plans. In this staff report, it was talked about they would develop again a community engagement piece, and there were two other bidders for that project. And I think it's important to note that one of them was Green Media Creations, that was $145,000, and Southwest Strategies, that was $45,000. And I reviewed their proposals as well. And the selection committee consisted of staff, I'm not sure what staff, but they decided to support the Burt's Rosa contract for $172,000 for this community outreach. Now, what was a little confusing for me as I looked through this is that there was a cost proposal, looking in the two, the two proposals offered by Burt's Rosa, in June of, June 24, 2016, they did a cost proposal of $252,000 for their consultant services. And then in August 22, they reduced it to $172,000, and I'm not sure what happened there. Staff, is there any staff here who can answer that? How we reduced it, $80,000 and?
Basically, there was a.
There was a, basically there was a component of the proposal that included paid media, email, newsletter, blog posts, and things of that nature, which were pulled out of the proposal.
Okay. Is Burt's Rosa here at all? Anybody from?
No, I don't see anyone.
No, so I'm not sure why they're not here, but as I look at the two proposals, they changed what they called branding, that went from $103,000 to $92,000. Social media that they were gonna do went from $20,000 to $5,000. And social media, as I looked on it, said basically opening up a Facebook and Twitter account. Now, I don't know about all of you, I've opened up a Facebook and Twitter account and it cost me nothing. For them, it went from $20,000 to $5,000. Then they were gonna do media relations from $18,000 to $8,000, and something they, oh, the community engagement went from $87,000 to $51,000. But interestingly enough, in the proposal we accepted, the report that they were gonna give to the city went from $7,500 to $16,000, that one we accepted. So I'm not sure how all of this changed, I don't know if their plan was that they were reducing their costs, but we were gonna somehow get the same service. I'm not sure how that would be possible, that you would give the same service that they were proposing in June for less money unless those numbers were inflated. This is not something that I'm going to support, I wish they were here to defend this proposal and why, again, they're not here, I have no idea. This is a redundancy to me to have all of these consultants who are doing this community outreach. They were planning on knocking on 1,000 doors to get feedback about parks, whether people liked parks, where they wanted parks, what they wanted in their parks. And I think all of us who are up here, I know over the last year, between the primary and general election, I knocked on probably 25,000 doors, not 1,000 doors. And I think I know that people like parks, and I think they know what they want in their parks. They would like green space and they like a place for their children to play, and perhaps basketball court and a softball field, but they also want their parks to be safe and they want their parks to be maintained. And I don't think we need to spend $200,000 to find that out. I think we probably all know that pretty well, and so to me, this has been a waste of money. And so when I looked at this, I found out that they've already submitted one invoice for, I guess, a little bit less than $15,000, so there's gotta be at least a savings of over $150,000 that can be used wisely for maintenance of parks that have been deferred. I know in Woodward Park, we weren't able to water some trees that died, I know we're not able to take care of some of the areas in Woodward Park as well as some other areas, and I know other, other council members have similar problems. So to me, this is something that we have to be wiser about in terms of how we spend money on consultants. Clearly, there are times we need consultants, and I've supported consultants already, but otherwise, other times, it seems to be either a duplication of services or simply something that staff can do or something that we already know and we don't need to be spending money. I again wish that the folks from Burt's Rosa and Catalano and Building Healthy Communities were here to defend this, but I think this is frankly an indefensible consultant contract, and I hope that we have a different kind of attitude about looking at these contracts. And the fact that these folks are not here, I'm not sure why they're not here to defend this contract, I think they ought to be here, I think the fact that they didn't show up says a lot. And the other thing that I think we as a council ought to take a look at, and I spoke to the city manager earlier today, and this has nothing to do against the city manager or anybody else, frankly, I think the city manager does a phenomenal job, I wish he would stay past the six months he's promised to leave, because I think he does a phenomenal job, but the city manager, I guess, can be awarding contracts for consultants that are less than $50,000. And my understanding is that the cumulative effect of those different contracts that get awarded for $50,000 or less than a year's period can total as much as a million dollars. And that's something I think as a council we ought to be looking at, I think we ought to be looking at every contract that goes out for consultants, I think we are elected to represent and protect the taxpayer dollar and look at the taxpayer money and see how it's being spent. And so I know there's a, the ability now for the city manager just to award those contracts without oversight. He lets us know later, but I think we ought to be reviewing all contracts, again, not because of anything he does, because what he does is a phenomenal job, but because we have a responsibility to protect the taxpayer. And we ought to be looking at every contract that's being spent, that's why we're here. And so I'm gonna be asking the city attorney if there's something we need to do in terms of a resolution or ordinance to come back to us so we can have that oversight, we ought to have that oversight. And I think this contract is an example of why we need to be looking very closely at the kinds of consultants that we're hiring and how we're using that money because our dollars are limited, and clearly it'd be better spent to maintain parks rather than wasting it on things we already know. So with that, I'll make a motion that we support the resolution to terminate this contract and defer them, and put the money back towards deferred maintenance of parks.
Okay, we have a motion from Member Brettafeld and a second from Member Soria. Member Soria is a cosponsor, do you want to say a few words?
Yeah, I will keep my remarks very short because I already had voted against this agreement back in October, so I have the same sentiment, my, I stand, you know, with the same argument, share some of the same sentiments with my council colleague Brettafeld. I just want to thank him for working with me to bring this agreement back. Folks know that I am a big advocate of community outreach, I think that when I voted previously on the Parks Master Plan and even in bringing the ATP that I know that we will be looking at next month, those are the questions that I always ask. And when I approved the contract with WRT, I specifically asked about community outreach. I know that they had about 13 events throughout the entire city of Fresno to get input, and I know that they also met with a number of stakeholders, so I do appreciate the work myself, that's why I have community meetings as well to share, to have my constituents share the concerns and the issues that they have and what they want to see in their parks. And that's why I share it here when I'm voting and making decisions and putting input, and I think that we've done a pretty outstanding job with all of that. So with that, I'm just gonna second the motion, and I guess we'll be ready for the vote whenever our president brings it up. Thank you.
Thank you. City Manager, well first, let me, I see you hunched up, let me go out to the public first. Are there any members of the public who wish to comment on this agenda item? So please come forward. Seeing none, we'll bring it back up to the dais. City Manager Rudd.
Thank you. You know, this item was debated quite a bit earlier or late part of last year. And while the same comments that there'd be made today were made then, and so I will too try to keep my comments brief, I also will try to provide some context. This dais has been, over the last couple of years, two, three years, has constantly heard from a number of stakeholders, BHC being one of them, about the need for more parks. There's more parks in one part of town versus another part of town, and the need to build more parks. There's another stakeholder group that wants us to build a 49, 50 acre soccer, and I will preface that with a regional soccer complex, although the region doesn't contribute a dime to the other two regional parks that we operate on behalf of the region. And then there's always, you know, discussions amongst the council that the, either improvements to existing parks, you know, splash pads, or when can we get something else added to a park? And one of the things that is coming out, and you guys have heard me at nauseam, over and over again talk about, you've got to identify, we have to reflect upon the costs of maintaining what we already have before we start building anything new or talk about adding any new assets to existing parks. If I can't take care of a totlot at an existing park, why am I building a splash pad in another park? And more importantly, if I can't take care of that, why am I even talking about building a new park anywhere else? And one of the first deliverables that, in discussions with WRT that I needed, and it seemed to be counter to the conversation that the community has had about more parks, more green space, more, more, and more, was you need to identify what is the cost, the holding cost, your ownership cost of the assets, the park assets we already have. And while it's important to be out into the community discussing what their expectations are, at some point in time, there's gonna be a point of realization or recognition as to what really are the priorities. And without knowing what that number is, going out and doing community engagement about, would you like to see a new park over here, would you like to see a 50 acre soccer complex, would you like me to add some trails, would you like me to do this? And everyone's gonna go, "Yeah, I'd love to have all that, yes, that's what I need, because someplace else in Fresno has this and I don't." Late last week, I sat down along with the Assistant City Manager and staff and met with WRT, because one of the very first deliverables was to identify what are the life cycle costs of what we already own. Now, this isn't the cost of cutting the grass, and this isn't the cost of putting water on the grass, this is just the cost of the irrigation system needed to get the water onto the grass, and replacing roofs, and replacing bathrooms, and replacing those kind of things that over course of time wear out. Again, these are costs that we've talked about recently, but previous administrations chose to just ignore. I can tell you that number today, and the reason some of you had community meetings already scheduled, district meetings with Burt's Rosa, the reason those, that those meetings, and there were two of them, I believe, Councilmember Soria, yours was one of them, and I think it may have been, well, I think it was District 4, but I don't want to say for sure. When I heard that, was it five, I put a hold and told Burt's Rosa Group, "You need to put those on hold until that information regarding the life cycle costs is presented to council." The reason for that, because I didn't want you or anyone else to hear, that the life cycle cost projected by WRT right now over a 10-year period is $112 million. Now, at some point in time, that number plus the number or the cost of adding is gonna require a very significant discussion within this community. You know, I've shared with Councilmember Brandow, we have the San Joaquin Conservancy that if they had the money to maintain a parkway, they would, they could probably go build it pretty, pretty quickly. But the challenge for, for the Conservancy, they have no money to pick up the trash once the trash gets in the trash can. They don't even have the money to replace the trash can. That's what I'm talking about when it comes to trails and parks. If you choose to decide that you don't want to fund this today, that's, that's your prerogative, and it's a philosophical and a policy discussion, and that is your, your, your right and your responsibility as you see fit. But my point is that some, in the future, there's gonna be a need to have an extensive community engagement, and somebody's gonna write a check for that. And the goal of this particular effort was to get that information out through these community meetings in which this is what you said you wanted before, now what do you think now that you know what this number is? Because it's not just, "I would like a new splash pad," it's like, "Well, okay, but I've gotta maintain the splash pad you already have," or "I have to maintain the lights you already have." And in order to bring both the trail component to the table, such as the Conservancy and the Parkway Trust, and the desire to build more parks with the reality of what it costs to maintain what we already have, it's gonna require an extensive discussion. BHC is one of those who is always talking to us about, "You need more parks." Well, BHC being part of this now is part of the solution because that's the reality. They're gonna have to now help with the narrative as to how do we bridge those two competing priorities? Because once I build a new park or we build a new park, the life cycle costs go up because I have to at some point in time replace those things that are brand new. And as we've talked about before, everyone loves to show up for the ribbon cutting when we build a new park or we build a new freeway or we build, but no one wants to show up when I replace the irrigation system or the bathroom or the totlot. Well, except maybe in D7, he'll show up when I replace the totlot. But that's the conversation that at some point, whether we have it today, or we have it two weeks from now, or we have it over the next two to three months or two to three years, the reality is, is that there is gonna be a significant funding gap between what we can even afford to do with what we have versus building anything new. The goal of this contract was to help convey that information to the community. Now, if council chooses today to terminate the agreement, again, that's your prerogative. I would also ask you to consider that before you make a decision, since I did tell the consultant Burt's Rosa not to schedule any more meetings until this information is presented to the council, you may want to consider making a decision regarding this contract until you are provided that information. But again, that's your prerogative, but that's not gonna change the underlying number and/or the underlying challenges that this community is gonna have to grapple with. So thank you, Council.
You know, Bruce, in listening to you, I disagree with one thing, it's not ad nauseam. Because in previous councils, they've been really slow to pick up your dialogue and the things you've told us, at least me, for four years about the total overall picture and the future, what we have to look forward to. So it's not ad nauseam to me, I appreciate it, because I get it, and it may take time for others to get it or not, whatever, but keep preaching that because we're setting the table for future councils and for future residents of Fresno with our fiscal responsibility that you've been advocating for a long time. The other question I had, maybe Bruce, you could help me, is that assuming this contract is canceled, what happens to the money?
The money will just go back to the general fund.
That's okay. And the other comment I had is this, we approved this four months ago. In my business, in the law business, when we make a decision in the court, that court decision stands. You can revisit that issue or even change that issue, but it requires a change of circumstances. Not just a change of circumstances, but a substantial change of circumstances. And in the last four months and today, I've not heard any factual information that would make me think that there is a substantial change of circumstances, so my vote will remain the same as it was four months ago, so, thank you.
Thank you, President. I have two concerns with this item here today. The first is, as Bruce mentioned, one of my districts is the one that's already scheduled some work with these folks, and so I will more than likely now be in a position to go explain to the CBOs, the church groups, that we will not be doing community input, and that's a very uncomfortable conversation for, for me to have, because I do think there will be valuable, this information, this broad range of community input will help us leverage dollars at the state and at the federal level. I think one of the criterias when we apply for grants is that you did a full comprehensive community input, and I think this, this will add that value. The other piece that I have a concern with is when the city does something like this, they, they also send a message to our private contractors, and I believe that if you look someone in the eye, you shake their hand, and you say, "We're gonna do business with you," that we should follow through on that. Now, if there was an issue here where it was lack of performance or something egregious, be more than happy to have that conversation, but for those reasons, I can't support that today. President Libya? Pull her back.
Thank you, Council President, and I, I talked way more than I should have last time we talked about this, but I did want to relate a story that happened when I went out to a park in District 2, Oso de Oro Park, and the Mark Parks Master Plan Group had a planned outreach, it was put on the internet, so I thought, you know, I'm gonna go gauge the level of interest, and went out there, it was not a great level of interest, people weren't lining up around the table. At this time, Danielle, Danielle from our city staff was there, and she was kind of trying to get people, trying to pass out a clipboard with a, with a survey on it. So I took the survey, my council assistant took the survey, we wanted, I mean, we were there, so we took the survey. It was also a chance to see the survey, it was very much kind of a little bit like what you described, Councilmember Brettafeld, it was, you know, rank these things in order, what would you like to see in your parks, and, you know, frisbee golf course, you know, a playground, a splash park, all kinds of things, rank your top five. I thought it was, you know, it's always valuable to get that information. There wasn't a lot of engagement, so there were a lot of people at the park, they were over on the playground equipment with their kids, so I went over and I just introduced myself, I took a stack of them and started passing them out and saying, "Hey, I'm your councilman, if you've never seen me before, you don't know me, but I'm your councilman, would you please fill this out and give it back to those folks at the..." would you please fill this out and give it back to those folks at the table? So my takeaway from that was, so this is what I feel, that outreach was already being done, Louis, some of that outreach was being done, as a matter of fact, Councilman Capriolio and I went into a meeting with that group, and Councilman Quintero, his meeting was running late, it was just informational, his meeting was running late, so we actually crashed his meeting and we all three sat in. And so there, there was already been some public outreach, there were already, there's already public outreach on this issue. And unless there's something, and Bruce, maybe you're changing the game now a little bit, and I could, I can understand that, but without, if this group, this other group appears to me is going to do more of that, and I think some of that's already getting done, my original arguments were maybe this is a redundancy of servants, services, and I'm going to stick to that, that vote today. So I just wanted folks to know that there is some outreach being done in our parks even now, so, anyway. Thank you, Council President.
All right, thank you, the screen is clear. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Well, you know what, why don't we go ahead and vote electronically? It might be close. So I want to vote electronically. A yes vote is to reverse the contract, and a no vote is to, to continue on the same course. Okay, we have four yes and two no, Members Chavez and Capriolio voting no, with Member Baines absent. All right, council, I think that's it for the day. Let me check, the, no, there's nothing else. All right, see you back here on the 7th. Thank you all very much.